This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRNE 101.9 FM.
The Eau Claire City Council is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton? Bergy?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkhammer?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Jean?
Here.
Beaton?
Okay. Again, good evening, everyone. Those of you that are joining us remotely and those of you that are joining us here in chambers and to our city staff and to the residents and to my fellow council members. This is our November 9 virtual meeting of the Eau Claire City Council. And again, for those of you who would like to address the city council tonight, you will need to join the meeting as an attendee on a computer, tablet, or smartphone using the link provided on the city website. The Eau Claire City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on the important decisions we will be making tomorrow afternoon in our legislative session or in the coming weeks or months ahead. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding. To watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. It is also simulcast at 101.9 FM. And you can find past meetings on YouTube under the Chippa Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, staff will present on that item and following that presentation, the council may have questions to clarify an issue. We then will open the item for public input. Once the item is open for comment, please raise your hand on the WebEx screen and we will call on you in the order in which the requests to speak are received. When it is your turn to comment, I will unmute you and ask you to please state your name and address and then begin sharing your comments. We welcome each of you to speak for up to five minutes and I will then ask you to bring your comments to a close. I will then ask you to lower your hand and you will then be muted but are welcome to stay in line to listen into the rest of the meeting or share a comment on another agenda item or during our public comment period. There are times when council members will have follow-up questions for you, so please give us a moment before disconnecting. Again, if you wish to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period at the end of the meeting. Lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking in public, you can fill out a comment form on the city website and those comments will be shared with the council members ahead of our legislative meeting tomorrow. As always, you can email or call the council members outside of this meeting and our contact information can be found on the city website. With that introduction, we'll get on to the first item on the agenda, which is the public hearing on an ordinance rezoning -- I'm sorry, on an ordinance amending Title 18 entitled zoning code of the City of Eau Claire related to commercial districts. Good evening, Mr. Allen.
Good evening, Council President Weld and members of the council. Thank you for your patience as we sort out the slides. So a number of slides here for your consideration tonight in regards to the item before you, which is Z1680-20 file number for a request to modify Title 18 zoning code of the City of Eau Claire related to commercial districts, in particular amending C3, Community Commercial zoning district, as it relates to light manufacturing and production. The -- what's unique about this request from other zoning text amendments that you may be familiar with is that a private individual has made the request through the rezoning process and again is requesting modification to the zoning text itself and the zoning code, again related to the application of light manufacturing production uses, thank you, and the C3 zoning district to allow it as a conditional use. Here's the proposed definition that's requested to be included into the commercial zoning district standards. It's essentially very similar to what you see in industrial zoning district standards with the exception of a few redactions, essentially taking out a few different uses to minimize kind of the expansiveness and extent of light manufacturing as it would be used in the commercial zoning district. The applicant provided, again, their materials initially back in March to the Plan Commission as a discussion item for the Plan Commission at that time. And there was, again, some substantive discussion as it relates to similar type uses that the applicant is looking to conduct for purposes of his current business use, such things as craft manufacturing, artisan manufacturing, micro manufacturing, or other terminologies that are used frequently in this type of use that is being proposed by the applicant at his current location. And again, additional materials were provided in your packet for review related to that discussion back in March. The application was reviewed by the Plan Commission at their meeting last week. There were quite a bit of points of discussion that I want to highlight. It was highlighted in the agenda item cover sheet as well, one of those being the lack of defined conditions as you would typically see in a conditional use type use. I mention that because it did highlight some of the potential concerns as it relates to this change of definition of zoning code, and that's in the screen before you here. These are things that could be considered a little bit more intensive than what we'd expect to see in a commercial zoning district or commercial setting and therefore are some items of concern that staff wanted to highlight, literally and figuratively, for your consideration as well. We'll come back to that here shortly, but in terms of context, one of the areas that this could apply more specifically would be the recent approval of the redevelopment plan by the redevelopment authority related to the Cannery District. And you can see here, it's a little fuzzy, so we'll zoom in a little bit. This type of use in terms of a maker's district, micro manufacturing, would be highlighted and has been highlighted in the redevelopment plan in the Cannery District, in particular the south end of the Cannery District area related to Platt Street, Oxford Avenue, near the riverfront. Again, a few different sites. You can see the hatched area would be that, where it's more of that mixed-use approach where you see a mix of residential and again more of a maker's district concept with light manufacturing production in this specific area. The red building there specifically is what, you know, would be kind of that hub, central focus point, focal point for the Riverside area of the Cannery District as it's called a maker's district. And again, we provided that information in your packet just to give a little bit of context as to where, you know, there was some initial interest earlier this year to look at modifying the zoning code to allow for a little bit more of that kind of lesser intense manufacturing type use or production use, assembly and such in this kind of more artisan manufacturing concept. So that was the intent that staff was expecting moving forward. But what's before you this evening, was before the Plan Commission, may not fit the mark or hit the mark in that regard. Another area that you could see this type of use in terms of a kind of artisan manufacturing, micro manufacturing occur is actually through the new kind of block diagram here specifically at Block 7. This is a bird's eye view of that intersection looking to the southwest from the northeast corner of the site at Wisconsin Street and Barstow Street. And again, this too was presented through the redevelopment authority not too long ago just to show kind of a conception of what a live-work concept could look like where you have more of that mix of uses, including kind of this micro manufacturing as a part of that mixed-use approach. And again, kind of this kind of block or corridor concept. You see more of the corridor concept in the Cannery District, here more of that kind of block area with Block 7. Did include some additional materials or -- I do want to reference some additional materials, I apologize, related to this. Again, looking back at what a definition of this type of light manufacturing and production would better look like in a commercial setting, referenced, looking back at a couple other publications. One of those is from Smart Growth America. We talk about small-scale manufacturing, neighborhood revitalization. I just wanted to bring this up because this gives a little bit better context in terms of what these types of definitions may be more appropriate in this case, artisan industry, small production, small production scaling. Again, what the applicant has in mind is something a little bit more larger scale in terms of reusing commercial, large-scale, commercial big box, retail building in a more purely commercial area. I thought this was also a good reference in that same publication where it talks about small storefronts for retail and production space being integral to that light manufacturing component. And again, that's a difference from more of the kind of purely segregated uses of industrial in a commercial setting that you may see with the proposed revisions in the zoning code. This in particular shows kind of, you know, that live-work concept, very much like what you saw with that diagram for Block 7, as well as that kind of more mix of uses in a larger corridor scale with the Cannery District plan. Again, I don't want to belabor this, but just did want to show what some other concepts were under consideration when this discussion was initiated back in March. I think that's it I have for slides. To go back to the original text, did want to highlight some of the concerns that were brought up by the Plan Commission, their meeting, their hearing last week. Again, even though the applicant has identified, you know, similar uses in some commercials districts throughout the city, one that you may be most familiar with would be the Artisan Forge on Mondovi Road. Again, there's a mix of uses there, but certainly that too also has, you know, a larger retail component associated with it in that case. Again, there's some more grandfathered uses primarily related to metalwork and such related to vehicle industry, so auto repair and other kind of ancillary uses with that are scattered in different commercial zoning districts throughout the city. So again, just did want to acknowledge that there are some of those similar types of uses that are in place at different parts of the city that the applicant has identified too. But again, just to kind of go back to what the Plan Commission focused on with their discussion last week. Again, with the -- when we apply this or, you know, if this definition were to be applied in the C3 district, again, there would be that conditional use concept and requirement for that kind of permit for any type of use like this. However, again, it would be, it would apply broadly throughout the entire city and all the C3 zoning districts. So more so than what you saw with examples of the Cannery District and Block 7 where this type of use may be a good mix added into these other uses in terms of live-work components, you know, apartments, micro retail and other retail. But again, as it's proposed, is more broad in nature. Along with that, did note that, again, there'd be, there's a lack of defined conditions and that would then put the onus on the Plan Commission to really set those forth in every specific request, you know, such as hours of operation, lighting restrictions, storage and vehicle restrictions, parking and such. So it'd be lacking in some consistency and a prescriptive approach. It'd be a lot more kind of case-by-case approach through a conditional use permit without any pre-determined conditions to consider. Some of the other items I want to highlight, again, this is all on your agenda item cover sheet. The concern of reuse versus new construction. Again, this change would be open to all C3 properties and not just underutilized buildings. So although the applicant is certainly, you know, taking a positive step in reutilizing an existing retail, you know, vacant retail space, it is not limited simply to the reuse of existing spaces, but would be open to all vacant properties as well that could be, you know, new construction, could be raising of buildings and rebuilding things that would necessarily perhaps not be appropriate in a purely commercial district. What was also highlighted was the compatibility with the surrounding properties, again particularly in existing retail when with other kind of attached users such as inline tenant spaces in a former strip mall. Again, using some specific examples, as the applicant did with Artisan Forge, another kind of balance to that would be the former ShopCo itself. Again, that's part of a larger strip center, part of a more purely commercial district and to look at opening that building up even though it would be, you know, a reuse of a vacant building to something more purely light manufacturing production may not be appropriate as it connects to and is integral to other adjacent uses and structures. Then finally, I wanted to note too that, as noted here in the highlighted portions, talks about production of chemical products, manufacture of assembly machinery, equipment, vehicles, appliances. Those are quite more intensive than perhaps even what the applicant may be considering with their own proposed uses, but that too could be a concern as it relates especially to neighboring properties when you talk about chemical use and storage. So with that, again, did want to emphasize the fact that the goal and intent is certainly a positive one and one that everyone seemed to be very agreeable to in the public hearing last week and staff certainly is as well in, again, reusing these underutilized buildings and properties and looking at some additional mixed-use components. Simply to move from a vacant building to light manufacturing production in a more commercial setting with commercial buildings and a commercial district, this may not be the best approach and may be too permissive and too general at this stage. And with that, again, the staff would be willing and able to, to look at taking this and moving to additional standards as I showed you earlier with kind of the other standards and reports out there talking about artisan production, talking about maker's district. So a lot of things that we already have underway that we could certainly refine and look at a little bit more specified zoning code change than what's before you this evening. And so with that, Plan Commission did make a motion to recommend approval, however, that did fail on a vote of three to six and therefore with that, I think I've addressed all the cogent issues, but if I can certainly stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Are there any questions from council? Can I ask if there are any questions from council? I am not seeing any questions, Mr. Allen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing and so if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item, if you would please raise your hand on the WebEx. Again, I'll ask if there's anyone that speaks, wishes to speak to this agenda item. And I am not seeing any. We will move on to agenda item number two, which is the public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property located at 4223 Jeffers Road from R1A to R3P and to adopt the general development plan for apartment buildings with 32 to 36 units. Again, Mr. Allen.
All right. Thank you again, Council President Weld and members of the council. And before you this evening is a rezoning request for property 4223 Jeffers Road. It's currently R1A. Applicant is requesting to change it to R3P as well as adopt general development plan for apartment buildings up to 36 units. It is item number five. This is a, again, Plan Commission agenda item number, but the file number there is Z1677-20, looking on the east side of Jeffers Road, essentially in the southeast quadrant with Jeffers Road and the north crossing. This map here shows the properties that were directly notified of the public hearing. Again, the Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on this item at their meeting last Monday. It shows more clearly the hatched area there is the property in question and aerial photo as well. This aerial photo is only two years old, but there's already additional multifamily constructed. Actually, where that label is for the file number is some additional apartments that have already been constructed last year right along the north crossing as well. So this is in a growing multifamily area. Did want to note that the applicant did initially provide this drawing and at the 11th hour switched to something a little bit more appropriate in terms of scale and open space. I'll talk about that in the comments here momentarily. Again, the property itself is just over two acres in size. It is, again, the R1A or TR1A zoning looking to be moved to the R3P, which is similar for the area around here. The coverage plan does designate the site as being appropriate for medium to high-density residential development. Applicant is looking to adopt general development plan for anywhere from 32 to 36 units. The developer is Mr. Lee Horemza and he is, has a contract to purchase from the property owner, Mr. Larry Shepler. The planning plan shows again the layout as shown here off of a private drive. Can bounce back here a bit more clearly showing here. And that private drive does access those apartments I noted earlier as well as some mix of office immediately to the north. The building elevation, there are two different building elevations, I'll show briefly here. It's a little bit dark exposure, apologies for that, but this is one of the proposed renderings, again pending final site plan approval, which would still be required should the rezoning general development plan be approved tomorrow. Applicant would still need to go through site plan approval as well. And here is the other building prototype for consideration. You can see here three stories for that and two stories for this one. Again, so looking at a mix of two different types of buildings as proposed here. Again, the original design called for three buildings, again, kind of packed in a little bit too tightly when you take into consideration the need for some open space, stormer detention, setbacks and other buffering required, as well as just general access. So the revision that was made almost at the 11th hour before the Plan Commission, but provided just in time for their consideration and is recommended for approval before you here tonight and tomorrow, is this drawing here, which again shows more open space, more of a kind of a neighborhood design and a better layout of the buildings as well. So we can see a lot more walking paths and access to Jeffers Road, better buffering to the properties to the south and to the east and again just generally a better layout in terms of density with these building types. There is a 10-foot buffer required to the south because of existing single-family home and setback would also include the parking here too. So again, you can see the southern area is a lot more open from what was initially proposed. Again, as noted, the final site plan approval would be required for, before Plan Commission and reviewed a later date. Engineering provided additional comments as well and did estimate that development would add 25 to 40 trips during the peak hour, but does, has identified that should not adversely impact traffic flow in the area as proposed. The project is about half mile from bus route number eight, Folsom and Vine and certainly could provide or generate some additional demand for transit. So with that, again, this was presented to the Plan Commission, their public hearing last week and is then presented with a recommendation for approval moving forward. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council from Mr. Allen? Again, I'll ask if there are any questions from council from Mr. Allen. I am not seeing any.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item? So please raise your hand on WebEx. Can I ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Mr. Horemza?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I saw that you had your hand up and I think, did you wish to speak to the, to the project? Or did you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Yeah, so I just wanted, just talking about the elevations, they are going to match each other. I know the renderings done now don't match each other, but obviously that'll be taken care of during site plan.
Anything else that you wish to add?
I think also the retention pond doesn't match exactly what the size we need, but we have more than enough room. It would be on that west building. So we have more than enough room to enlarge that as the site plan goes to, because I know when people look at that, the first thing they're going to notice is that retention pond isn't sufficient size, but we do have room to work with.
Anything else?
That'd be it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? And I'm not seeing any. And Mr. Horemza, if I could get you to lower your hand for me. All right, we will move on to agenda item number three, which is a public hearing on a charter, on a charter ordinance relating to the city council and the reapportionment of the Aldermanic districts of the City of Eau Claire. Good evening, Ms. Repel.
Good evening. Tomorrow's agenda has an annexation of the KSM Farm property for the Gateway Industrial Park. The annexation will require a new voting ward as it is in a different assembly district than the adjacent city property. This will create Ward 82 in Aldermanic District Number Four. There are two items on tomorrow's agenda. One is a resolution creating the new ward and the second is a charter ordinance. and the second is a charter ordinance adding the ward to the Aldermanic Districts. This property is in Chippewa County, so it will, the polling location will be Fire Station Number Eight.
Thank you, Ms. Repel. Are there any questions from council? Again, are there any questions from council? I'm not seeing any. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item? If so, please raise your hand. Again, is there anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item? And I am not seeing any. I will move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is a public hearing on the 2021 operating budget, the library and health department budgets, and special agency funding. Good evening, Mr. Winsenz.
Good evening, Council President Weld and members of the City Council. Before you this evening is a public hearing on the proposed 2021 operating budget for the City of Eau Claire, as well as the budgets for the library and the health department. Next slide, please, Kathy. So an overview of the 2021 budget. As required by Wisconsin statutes, the increase in the tax levy, or the total dollar amount that the city assesses to property owners within the City of Eau Claire, is limited to what's called net new construction. Net new construction for 2019 was 1.92%. This amount then informs the allowable levy increase for 2021, which is 1.92%, or a total of $699,300. That is distributed between the city, the library, and health department. Approximately $597,300 of that goes to the City of Eau Claire, $65,200 to the library, and $36,800 to the health department. Next slide, please. So in preparing the 2021 budget, we had several assumptions that we built in to that proposal. We did build in a wage increase of 1 1/4% on January 1 of 2021, and also a wage increase of 1 1/4% on July 1 of 2021. These are consistent with all of the settled collective bargaining agreements that we have with the unions representing various city employees. We also did include step increases as provided for in the pay plan. We ended up in this budget needing to use our off-election year savings to fund increased general fund subsidies to various non-general fund accounts. And we factored in a health insurance decrease of 1%. Originally, when we were preparing the budget, we were estimating an increase of 2% in health insurance. But right towards the end of the process, updated information from our insurer indicated that rather than a 2% increase, we would realize a 1% decrease. And this swing of 3% in health insurance premiums was critical to preparing a balanced budget that's before you this evening. Next slide, please. So this budget does contain some newer enhanced programs and services, and, you know, we're very pleased to be able to provide those to the community. This proposed budget does include an equity diversity and inclusion coordinator. This is a position that would be shared with Eau Claire County. It includes a police co-response coordinator, includes what's being titled as a computer support technician, but really is a position that's replacing what was formerly an electrician position in the engineering department. The electrician position will retain some of its, or the computer support technician will retain some of the electrician duties and responsibilities, but will also take on certain duties and responsibilities associated with our information technology area, specifically working on the broadcasting of city council meetings and technology related to that. Also within this budget is funding to study police co-response. So we're hiring the co-response coordinator, and then also that individual will help lead them how to best implement co-response within the City of Eau Claire and perhaps surrounding areas as well. Important to point out that the police co-response coordinator, as well as the study, are both being funded by reallocating existing funds within the police department. These are not, there's not additional funding going into the police department for these services, but rather a vacant detective position is being eliminated, and the funding from that is being used for the co-response coordinator, as well as the study. Next slide, please. So some of the changes that we needed to make to close our gap in this budget. First of all, we eliminated, are proposing the elimination of the contract with Valley Media Works for the broadcast of council meetings. So as I mentioned before, the computer support technician position will be responsible for the broadcast of those meetings. We also are proposing to delay the filling of the planner position until July 1 of 2021. This is the position that was created last year in order to implement the public budgeting, and we've not been able to do that due to COVID, and hopefully we'll be able to begin that implementation next year. We've also reduced a quarter FTE administrative associate position in the fire department and dedicated an additional .25 FTE to risk management. And as I mentioned previously, we reduced the health insurance from a 2% increase to a 1% decrease. Next slide, please. In addition, we reduced the subsidy to Hobbs Ice Center to the 2020 level and changed our web filtering software from a three-year contract to an annual contract. Next slide, please. Well, we were able to make some enhancements to our services. There are various unfunded requests. These are requests from departments that we were not able to fit in to the 2021 budget. But I think it's important for the City Council to know that there are numerous requests that were received that we were not able to fund. These include an IT network engineer, recreation administrative associate, various positions in community services to help out with both parks as well as streets, survey crew chief in engineering, firefighter paramedics, a law enforcement associate. We do expect that this position will come back in 2022 as this will be necessary for the implementation of both the video systems and squads, as well as the body worn cameras. Next slide, please. Office 365 licensing. This may not sound like a big deal, but it really is. Microsoft is moving away from the desktop versions of Microsoft Office into the cloud with Office 365. At some point in the future, what we're currently using will no longer be supported. This is a very significant hit to our general fund budget that we'll need to deal with at some point in the not-too-distant future. We also weren't able to fund requests for miscellaneous fire equipment, an energy efficiency incentive program, upgrades to our finance software, upgrades to our human resources software, central equipment replacement, and street lighting. Next slide, please. In terms of key characteristics of this budget and impact on the property taxpayer, the assessed value of the City of Eau Claire increased by nearly $80,000. Our equalized value increased by nearly $365 million. Our net new construction was about $102 million. The property tax levy for operations increased by $597,300, or 1.98%. Debt service increased by about 1.9%. The total tax levy is going up by about $751,900, or 1.96%. Our non-property tax revenue actually decreased by $424,665, or 1.29%. Majority of this is caused by a decrease in investment earnings on our fund balance amounts. We've seen a dramatic decline in interest rates from February of 2020 to current. They decreased from nearly 2% to about .2%. And this has a significant impact on our earnings that we're able to realize on those investments. Our total revenue is increasing by about $379,000, or 0.49%. Next slide, please. Operating expenses are up about $617,000, or 1.11%. Our capital transfer, that's our transfer from fund balance to fund our capital expenditures contained in the CIP, is down by about $19,000. As I said before, debt service is up by about $155,000. Total expenditures are up by about $382,000, or about 0.5%. The gross tax rate will increase by about 4.7 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, and the taxes on the average home will increase by about $8.25, or 0.58%. Next slide, please. So the budget was presented to the City Council back on October 6. The City Council held a public discussion on the budget on October 12. We held a work session on October 20. There were work sessions scheduled on October 13 and October 27, but those were both canceled. Here we are tonight. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in a second time on the proposed budget before we ask the City Council to adopt that budget tomorrow afternoon. Following the budget adoption tomorrow, the City Council will be asked to set the property tax levy on November 24. Next slide, please. With that, I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Winsenz. Are there any questions from council? Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you so much, Council President Weld, and thank you to Mr. Winsenz for your presentation. I have a question around the community development planner position and the effective date for that position for participatory budgeting and other responsibilities, not just participatory budgeting, as I understand, would be July 2021. In the likely event, we are unfortunately still dealing with COVID in July of 2021. Do you foresee, or maybe Mr. Allen could speak to this, possibly delaying the hiring or just really, no matter how COVID behaves, going forward with that position effective July 2021?
I would, you know, certainly entertain Mr. Allen's comments as well, but, you know, I think that, I mean, our plan at this point is to go forward with that July 1. Now, you know, one of the things that a July start date allows us to do is hopefully attract, you know, potential recent graduates from graduate schools, planning graduate schools, to that type of position, those individuals, you know, graduating in May or June. So that timing does tend to work out well. But certainly, you know, before we fill any position, we evaluate whether or not that position, A, needs to be filled and B, if it needs to be filled at that particular time. I think we all recognize that the planning department has a great deal of work on their plate, both with current development activity, as well as long-range planning, as well as implementation of the housing plan. So I think that there's plenty of work to be done, and certainly at this point in time. I think that we would like to try to fill that position effective July 1. But certainly, you know, Mr. Allen, if you'd like to chime in as well, that would be great.
Mr. Allen.
Sure. No, I think Jay answered squarely. You know, there's certainly other responsibilities that we're expecting this plan to assist with, and that has, you know, as well as getting the Housing Opportunities Commission, as well as neighborhood planning. Even talking with our new senior planner, Ned Noel, today. We're talking about, you know, already two newer neighborhood associations looking to have assistance with the neighborhood plan development as soon as possible. So there is certainly no shortage of community planning work that will be necessary. And so as far, as my position is concerned in terms of, you know, managing that division, we will gladly take additional staff at any given time over the course of the next budget here. And in the meantime, we are currently recruiting for, now that the associate planner that Ned Noel has left, so, you know, we're certainly strained for our capacity right now and will continue to be as these, these still out there regardless of our current pandemic situation. So, and again, not to make it too overwrought, but I confirm and affirm what Mr. Winsenz is saying already.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Are there any other questions from Mr. Winsenz from council? Again, are there any other questions from council? I am not seeing any, Mr. Winsenz. Thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item from the public. Please raise your hand on WebEx. And I am not seeing any. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is a public discussion of amendments to the City of Eau Claire Schedule of Fees and Licenses effective January 1, 2021. Again, Mr. Winsenz.
Thank you, Council President Weld and members of the City Council. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on our proposed schedule of fees and licenses for 2021. This document has been prepared in consultation with all of the different divisions and departments that charge fees and licenses, fees for their various services, as well as their licenses. This has been, was provided to the City Council at the same time the proposed budget was provided to give you opportunity to hopefully review it in a little bit more detail than you may have been allowed, than time may have allowed in prior years. So this document does contain all of our fees and charges for both the city, as well as the health department. And it is, I think, worth pointing out that the Board of Health is the body that's responsible for establishing the fees of the city-county health department. And those are really provided for your information within this document, but we like to keep all of those in one place for, so that members of the public only have to reference one particular document. But those are really provided for your information in the City. But those are really provided for your information, and the City Council does not have the ability to change those particular fees or licenses. So with that, it would be appropriate for the City Council to receive any public input on the schedule of fees and licenses, and this will be before the City Council for adoption tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Winsans. Are there any questions from council? Again, I'll ask if there's any questions from council. I am not seeing any, thank you. Again, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Corey?
Thank you, Council President Weld. My name is Corey Garati. I reside at 2428 LaSalle Street here in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I would like to talk about 6.14, the keeping of honeybees. The licensing and the fees started back in 2016 at the amount of $45. In 2019, that was increased to $75, and then for a first-time beekeeper, there was also a $95 health department inspection fee added. Now, we got this notice through the mail. It was explained to us it was because the beekeeper no longer needed to go neighbor-to-neighbor to gather signatures. Now, I am speaking on my behalf, in my incident, I only have seven people that I need to talk to, and also when we were required to gather those signatures, we spoke to them in education about the importance of pollinators. For me to see the increases of $40, and again, propose the same for 2021, seems a little high, considering looking at other cities within our state with the same guidelines. For example, the city of Milwaukee only charges $87 one time during the lifetime of that beekeeper. Green Bay, Wisconsin, only charges $10 one-time fee. City of LaCrosse is $5 every five years. City of Chippewa, there is no fee, and our state capital, Madison, is only $10 a year. Here in Eau Claire, Wisconsin, we've talked about sustainable living. Part of that sustainable living is the quality of food we eat. Pollinators play a very important part of our community, pollinating not only the flowers but the fruits and vegetables that we grow here in our area. Pollinators are responsible for one in four bites of food that we take. Here it is, I see that the city and the licensing fee of these increases puts a damper on pollination or the raising of pollinators. I would like to recommend that the council do something similar to those other cities that I spoke about. The other part that I'd like to bring up is the dates of the licensing. In 2016, when this keeping of honeybees was established, the dates were coincided with keeping the bees. It was April 1st through March 31st. When the council changed it in 2019 to run January 1st through the December 31st period, it requires a beekeeper, and this will morally affect new beekeepers, it requires us to pay two years in order to see if our bees survive through the winter. And then also with that $75 initial fee, that basically ties a beekeeper's hands because that's about 30 pounds of honey, which is equivalent to what one hive needs to survive. Now, I strongly encourage council to look at these fees, and I do understand that in since 2016, since the beekeeping has started here within the city, there's only been four of us, but the fees seem to be increased and really no reason why, in my eyes. Pollination is supposed to be something that helps the world, but yet at the same time, it seems like the council is hurting, or the license department is hurting those that are raising pollinators. City Council President Weld, council members, I thank you for your time, and if you do nothing, I will remind you that please help the pollinators by planting a small garden in your own backyard, on your porch, and please be aware of the chemicals that you use at home and on city property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate you signing in. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Quam. I live at 3721 Elve Avenue here in Eau Claire. I'm representing the Chippewa Valley Transit Alliance, we're a nonprofit public transportation advocacy organization, and I basically would like to comment on behalf of the proposed amendment to the bus fare structure that would allow low-income residents to purchase bus fares at the same cost that a senior citizen would or somebody on disability. I think this would be a very wise move on the City Council's part, you know, to make an adjustment with the bus fares for people that are struggling with income or financial stability, and I would strongly encourage the council to, you know, please look at this, because I think this is something that's been long overdue in the community here, that we have a lot of low-wage workers, a lot of people that do not have other means of transportation other than a bus or walk or bicycle to get to and from work, and I think, you know, making this more affordable or accessible for people that struggle with income, I think it would be a step in the right direction. So I would like to highly go on record in support of, you know, making amendment to the adjusted bus fare for people that are on fixed or limited income, and that's basically my comment that I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quam. I appreciate you logging in. Have a good night.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, in regards to schedule fees and licenses, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this item? And Mr. Quam, if I could get you to lower your hand for me. Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is a public discussion on an ordinance amending Chapter 15.04 of the City Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Sewage Service Charge to Increase the Sewer User Charges as Proposed in 2021 Operating Budget. Again, Mr. Winsans.
Thank you, Council President Weld and the City Council. Before you, tomorrow afternoon, will be an ordinance increasing our sewer service charge, and this evening is an opportunity for the public to comment on that proposed increase. As the operator of a wastewater treatment plant, we are required to establish a sewer service charge based upon our costs of operating that service, including our costs to replace and repair all of the infrastructure associated with the provision of that service. Each year, we reevaluate our sewage service fees based upon the current budget and our costs of providing those services to the community, as well as the cost that we need to recover from our repairs in order to maintain the system. Provided in your packet this afternoon, or this evening, are the proposed rates for 2021. As you can see from that table, our quarterly flat fee would be $9.30, and then our charge, our volume charge would be $4.38, with that estimated total quarterly charge for the average user of $75 per quarter. Even at this proposed increase, the city of Eau Claire would fall really right in the middle of our comparable communities with that $75 per quarter fee. I think of note is that Eau Claire's rate structure is heavily dependent upon the volume charges as opposed to the quarterly flat fee. If you look at that table, you'll see that the quarterly flat fee for Eau Claire at $9.30 is the lowest among all of those peer communities. The other communities range from the next lowest at $13.60 all the way up to $49.71 on the flat service fee. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions. Otherwise, it would be an appropriate time for the City Council to hear from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Winsans. Are there any questions from council in regards to the sewage service charge? Again, are there any questions from council? I am not seeing any. We'll open it up to the public, and if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this agenda item, please raise your hand on WebEx. Again, I'll ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item from the public. Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is a public discussion on an ordinance amending the City of Eau Claire Pay Plan and Practices. Good evening, Ms. Selton.
Good evening, Council President Weld and members of the City Council. Before you tomorrow for a vote is the proposed amendments to the City of Eau Claire Non-Represented Pay Plan, as detailed by Mr. Winsans. This would provide for across-the-board wage increases for the non-represented employees of 1.25% January 1 of 2021 and 1.25% July 1 of 2021. It would also create the two new positions that Finance Director Winsans mentioned. If you can go to the next slide, Kathy. The, oh, it's kind of hard to read, but this is the very first page of the city manager's budget message, and it does talk about these two new positions. The first one is the co-response coordinator, and this would be a position, it's a converted police detective position, and the police co-response coordinator would develop working relationships with social worker agencies and providers to create, in partnership with a police response, social service assistance for those who are in need, and to provide crisis intervention, conflict resolution, short-term counseling, and outreach to those in the community requiring social services. The second position to be created as part of the pay plan would be the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator position, which is the shared position with Eau Claire County, and the purpose of that position is to develop effective working relationships with key stakeholders, elected officials, community groups, external diversity organizations, and city and county departments to foster collaboration and promote social justice in the community. So those are the two new positions called for with this proposed amendment to the pay plan. And then the last item, Kathy, if you want to go back to that first slide, there was one reclassification request this year, and that was to move the legal assistance/paralegal position from pay grade H to pay grade J. And that request was reviewed by our outside compensation consultant, McGrath, Victoria McGrath, and was approved. With that, I'll entertain any questions that council may have with respect to these proposed amendments to the Non-Represented Pay Plan for 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Selton. Are there any questions from council? Any questions from council? I do not see any. Thank you. Again, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item from the public, please raise your hand on WebEx. Again, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item, please raise your hand. And I am not seeing any. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is a public discussion on an ordinance amending Table 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Parking, Stopping, and Standing Prohibited, and Title 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Vehicles and Traffic, relating to parking enforcement for electric vehicles and parking enforcement of unregistered vehicles. Good evening, Ms. Ness.
Good evening, thank you. The proposed parking ordinance changes before you tonight are related to the enforcement of signed electric vehicle parking and also unregistered vehicle parking on the street. First, addressing electric vehicle parking. As the city starts to implement charging stations through all our parking lots, we are looking at locations in the Gibson, for the Galloway parking ramp, and also at the Forest Street parking lot, we need to be able to have signage at those locations and for the police department to be able to enforce the signage. So if an electric vehicle parking stall is signed, if a non-electric vehicle is parked in that location or a vehicle not charging, it would be a violation of the code. The second item that we are addressing tonight or adopting, looking at adopting, is the additional section related to unregistered vehicles. It allows our community service officers to handle parking-related issues to non-registered vehicles on the street. The ordinance is for better definition of unregistered vehicle, and it's included in the second section of the ordinance presented. For both situations, there is a cost of vehicles, if they are towed, the citation amount would be $30, which is outlined in the fee schedule, and also in the ordinance change, or referenced in the ordinance change. And with that, shown on your screen is just an example of what the potential signage for electric vehicle parking would be and some pavement marking related to that. We did work with the police department on warning and the attorney's office for the ordinance changes and hope that the changes to the ordinance will help be able to better define and outline the locations or the signage availability for electric vehicle parking, and then also addressing unregistered vehicles that are parked on the roadway and enforcement of that. That, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Ness, I'm wondering if the unregistered vehicles are also covered if it's on private property?
My understanding is that there is an ordinance that looks at inoperable or abandoned vehicles on private property, but this is just addressing within the roadway or on the street.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council from Ms. Ness? Again, any questions from council? I am not seeing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we'll open this up to the public. If there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item, please raise your hand. Again, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item. Seeing none, we will close the public discussions and move on to our public comment period. For those of you that wish to speak this evening during the public comment period, please click on the icon to raise your hand. I will then call on you in the order in which you appear on the screen. Please state your name and City of Eau Claire address. The public comment period is for those living or working in the City of Eau Claire. Please note that your comments should be regarding issues or concerns of citywide application, and please do not comment on issues that were on tonight's agenda, as council wants and needs to hear those comments during the notice public hearing or discussion. Also, please be aware that Also, please be aware that during this public comment period, council members are not allowed to ask questions or comment on your remarks, so please do not misinterpret our silence. We are listening. If there isn't anyone that wishes to speak this evening during our public commentary period, you will have three minutes. I will alert you when you have 30 seconds remaining, and then I will ask you to bring your comments to a close. This comment period will last for 20 minutes, and unless it is the wish of two-thirds of the council to extend it. Again, if you would, raise your hands if anyone wishes to speak during the public comment period. Mr. Neese.
Yeah, hello. Good evening, council members, and thank you for taking time to listen. I am Andrew Neese. I'm a software engineer on Aaron Street, and I'm a concerned citizen because part of my job is working with data, and the data that I see from the COVID infections and hospitalizations is very alarming to me. And last week, WQOW reported that Eau Claire's hospitals are nearly full, and they're facing the possibility of people soon being turned away into night care. And, you know, we're seeing that across the country, too, but in the absence of national leadership and with the gridlock of state leadership, the last line of defense for this falls to county and city-level governing bodies and health officials. So right now, we're witnessing, you know, an uncontrolled exponential growth of COVID, and given the lag time between infection, incubation, and hospitalization, you know, it's already too late to stop the surge that you're going to see two weeks from now. But what you can do is you can make a decision that affects what happens in three weeks or four weeks from now. And what I would like to ask the council to consider is to have a number in mind, whether that's a 90% capacity or 95% capacity. You know, at some point, I would like them to have a, I would like you to have a number to pull the trigger on some kind of emergency COVID ordinance. And I think a good ordinance is one that would be, A, specific to this pandemic or this situation, B, be something that can make a meaningful improvement in our case numbers, and C, has the political will to pass. So with this closer threat to the healthcare system, my hope is that there would be more political will and more community support than you saw just a few weeks ago. So, you know, what's in that ordinance, I don't know. What you're capable of doing, but, you know, maybe it's time to get creative, like maybe you have a small fine for mask violations, or maybe you try to enforce some of the gathering restrictions that Governor Evers has not been able to implement on a state level. One idea that I had was letting the bars have a takeout service or alcohol delivery so that the bars can have a source of revenue without people sitting in them all night getting infected. So I don't really know what the answer is, but I just hope that you are cognizant of the situation and considering your options as our city's governing body, because I am tired of watching these numbers go up and wondering if our hospitals are going to be filled to the brink. So thank you for considering my comments, and that is the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neese. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak during the public commentary period? If so, please raise your hand. Again, if there's anyone else that wishes to speak during the public commentary period, please raise your hand. And I am not seeing any others. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. And again, thank to my fellow council members joining us remotely, and again, thank you to our staff and to Valley Media for streaming this meeting. If there's, I'm sorry, Mr. Kapsner? Mr. Kapsner, did you wish to speak to the public commentary period? So you need to unmute? Okay, well, we're having some technical difficulty, it looks like, with Mr. Kapsner's. With that, again, Mr. Kapsner, if you can hear me, you're welcome to email us or phone any of us this evening or tomorrow at any time at your convenience. With that, if there's no objection from council, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. The Eau Claire City Council is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Anderson.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Beaton. Bergy. Christopherson.
Here.
Emmanuel.
Here.
Gregert. Okay. Klinkhammer.
Here.
Lor.
Yeah.
Weld.
Here.
Wirthman.
Here.
Jean.
All right, good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, November 10th Legislative Session of the Eau Claire City Council. And thank you to the residents that are joining us here today virtually, to my fellow council members that are joining us remotely, and then to staff here in chambers and my fellow council members here in chambers. Again, it's our legislative session, and I also want to thank those that joined us last night during our public discussion and public hearings, and those that have sent us notes and comments throughout the day today. During our legislative session this afternoon, the council members will be participating either remotely or in person to deliberate and take action on the agenda items before us today. City staff and council members have spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting, and I have sincere appreciation for the continued work and dedication to this community. I also want to thank Valley Media Works and their staff for live streaming this meeting. To watch, please visit valleymediaworks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. The first item on our agenda is the COVID-19 update from interim city manager Solberg. Good afternoon, Mr. Solberg.
Good afternoon, Council President Weld, and thank you to the City Council for allowing me to give an update on our COVID-19 response from the city. We're entering our ninth month already of the pandemic. It's been a long nine months, and the fight continues. Once again, real quickly, on the screen, our sources of information for the public to get the most up-to-date information regarding the coronavirus from our health partners at the City-City Health Department. But we have the coronavirus hub that the link is shown. It's also available through the City of Eau Claire and the county website. That contains metrics and statistics. They're updated on Thursdays every week. It is in response to infection rates, hospitalization rates, different numbers to show the trends, how the progress with the pandemic is progressing. There are live local updates by our Health Director, Lisa Gizi, on Thursdays at 3:30. They are shown on Facebook as well as YouTube, and some of the media outlets carry that as well. And we do have a COVID-19 call center available at area code 715-831-7425, and that is a number that you can call if you have any concerns or questions regarding the coronavirus. And then also, the City-City Health Department has a Facebook page that's shown. If you search for Eau Claire Health on Facebook, you will have information also. Following the update that I will give, I believe Health Department Director Gizi is on the phone, and we'd be more than happy to answer questions after running through a few numbers. Our total positive cases for Eau Claire County stand, as of last week, at 5,131 cases. For positive, there have been a total of 32,627 negative cases. Noteworthy are deaths. For this update, there was none from the previous day, but just to show the progression, when I gave the update on, or when Council, City Manager Peters gave the update on October 13th, we had four deaths. When I gave the most recent update prior to this one, on October 27th, we had 12 deaths, and we stand at 31 deaths today. So we've lost 37 members, or 31 members of our community to this pandemic. There are a total of 162 cases of hospitalization. We still currently have 1,220 active cases in our community, so roughly one-fourth of all cases that we've had since the pandemic began are still active in our community, and we've had almost 3,900 cases recovered. The next, a few additional numbers, we're averaging approximately 148 new positive cases per day on average. To show the progression of that, on October 13th, that number was 40, and two weeks ago, it stood at 104, and now we are experiencing 148. So the trajectory is still increasing in our community. We've had 29 new outbreaks during the past week. Our positivity rate remains extremely high with our tests coming back, and our state rating for Eau Claire County is very high. Like I had mentioned on the previous slide, we've had 19 additional deaths over the last two weeks, so it is taking a toll on our community. Again, cases are spreading across all age groups, and they are spreading throughout Eau Claire County. It's not just, it's not just contained to the city borders or the downtown area. It is spreading countywide, and our community spread is at 35%. So what that number means, and there'll be some additional numbers, statistics after this, 35% of the cases that we are experiencing, that are new cases, do not know where they received the coronavirus from. So they presumably have contacted the virus in the community through the spread. 162 individuals have been hospitalizedized, and that is up 41 from two weeks ago. So on the next slide, we have a few, and on the status column on the right, red is the most troubling category or most concerning color. Green is good, and then yellow is obviously in between. For outbreaks, we strive to have less than three outbreaks per 14-day period, and we've had 29, so we're quite high there. Community spread stands at 35%, down slightly from two weeks ago, but still well above the 30% threshold to get it out of the red category. And if we go to the next one. For the next one, a key is the positivity rate for testing that is in red, and the goal was to be less than 10%, and we're at 18.6%. And then the bottom two numbers, or the bottom two metrics with green and yellow, even though they show up as green and yellow, they're very close to approaching the concerning or the very concerned categories. 77% of our beds and our inpatient beds in our hospitals are occupied. 80% or less is in the green category, but once we have an additional 3%, we will be in the yellow, and just 13% increase will get us into the red category. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room there, and we're at 89% of our ICU beds being in use in the last 14 days. That's right on the threshold of turning red also. So our statistics are getting more concerning with each update. And then the last slide with statistics, our case contact and tracing, and this has to do with when we do have positive cases, and our health department follows up to try and have contact with the persons for the case contact and talk them through, you know, the obligations with the infection and to start the contact tracing. We're at 69% of case contacts are contacted within 24 hours, and our goal is to have 75% or greater contacted. So we're just out of the yellow, but we are in a red category. And then contact tracing to help identify where the disease came from and help control the disease. We're at 42% of those individuals are traced within 48 hours of a case interview, and our goal is to have greater than 85%. So we're about half, and that indicates a strain and a lack of resources to be able to keep up with the cases that are coming into our system. And state orders-wise, there is only one current state order, and that's the Governor's Mask Mandate that was issued on September 22nd. It is seeing, it is under legal challenge, but it is in effect and is set to expire on November 21st unless further action is taken. And then what our, our next steps are similar to what they've been. We're trying to remain flexible to changing conditions and orders from the, both the state and federal government, if they would be forthcoming. We're adjusting our operations as a city to try and keep the safety of the public and the safety of our employees prioritized, as well as meeting our operational objectives and our requirements to keep the lights on and keep the utilities going and keep the public services that are essential moving along. We are involved with the Chippewa Valley Economic Recovery Task Force with trying to provide resources to businesses and those members of the society that help make up commerce in our economy for resources, messaging, support, anything we can do to try to help keep our economy moving along and to help recover. There is a Caring is Contagious campaign that the Economic Recovery Task Force has launched recently to get support from community members, and Charlie Barons from the Manitowoc Minute has done a spot for us that is going out through social media to try and help the community not only be caring by wearing a mask and doing those things that help prevent the spread of the disease, but also to do things for your neighbors and help take care of each other. So we're a community, we're all in this together, to try and promote acts of kindness and compassion to one another amongst, or in the face of the pandemic. And then lastly, we are still supporting the Respond Together Plan. With that, that's a quick update. I believe Health Director Gizi is on the phone, and I would entertain any questions if there are any.
Good afternoon, Ms. Gizi.
I am here. I can give some additional updates if you'd like, otherwise I certainly am available, Council President Weld, to answer any questions.
No, please go ahead and give us any updates you have as well, and then we'll open it up to the council for questions.
So I would first of all, you know, thank Mr. Solberg for that overview. We are experiencing, as I think everybody realizes, a drastic increase in cases. Today's count, which Dave did not have because it came out just as council was going, moving forward, we are now at 5,000. forward, we are now at 5,223 positive cases with Eau Claire County residents and 35 deaths. So, we had an increase of four additional people that died since yesterday. So, we are, we are in a challenging space with the spread of COVID-19. The outbreaks that were shared, many of them are happening in spaces that are ones where vulnerable populations live, and we are seeing spread across all age groups and across all parts of our county, City of Eau Claire, but also well beyond the City of Eau Claire. So, certainly, a place that is concerning, about half of our cases, our total cases, have occurred in the last four weeks. So, I think just to note, our case count on October 9th, a month ago, was 2,564 cases. So, really, in the last four weeks, we've had half of our cases happen. I would also share with you that we have had to prioritize what cases we follow up with. So, Mr. Solberg shared the percent follow-up that we've been able to do for both cases and contacts. And the next time you see that data next week, it'll look significantly worse because not only are we not able to anymore follow up with the close contacts, those people are being informed by the individual that is a positive case rather than by the health department. We are now not able to follow up on all of the individuals that are identified as a case. So, as you may have seen, a couple of the days last week, we had more than 200 cases a day. The last couple of days, we've had about 100 new cases a day. We are having to prioritize which ones we even are able to call. We're hoping that our numbers go down and we don't have to do that prioritization, but we are really asking everybody, if you have been told by, by your provider or the place that you were tested at that you are a positive for COVID-19, please go to our website. We have new buttons on the Facebook page of our website that really walk people through what they should do. We are prioritizing phone calls to individuals that are over 65 and under 19, as well as individuals contacted to congregate care settings or outbreak settings that are happening. So, a concern that people should note, the new hospital data that arrived from the region just a few minutes ago did show higher levels in every one of the measures that they're tracking for the region. And I would note particularly that our individuals that are currently in intensive care units for COVID-19 is at the highest number that we've seen yet, and those are probably all individuals that are in Eau Claire hospitals, even if they aren't all Eau Claire residents. And all of the hospitals are reporting challenges with staffing and challenges with beds. So, we are definitely, as described by Mr. Solberg, in a significantly different spot.
Thank you.
I certainly am available to answer any questions that anybody has.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Giezi. Council vice president Emmanuel.
Thank you, council president, and thank you to Mr. Solberg and to our public health director, Ms. Giezi, for the update. It's a very sobering update. Of course, the ideal state is that we would have a national response plan, and if not that, a state response plan that is cohesive in nature. And then, of course, there's many challenges that have been put up there. I did note that the governor is set to speak tonight at 6:05 PM with an update, and I'm hoping we will learn something significant then. But I, I think people in our own backyard, next door, our families are getting really worried. And as you, I think, heard last night, we had a citizen who's reaching out now, and I'm sure more citizens are thinking this as well, of what can we do on the local level? You know, I know that council passed one of the amendments and an action probably about a month ago, saying, you know, we would definitely welcome any urgent matters to be brought before council. I hate to put you on the spot and ask such a dire question, and I also think it's what lots of people are wondering, of like, what do we do as local elected officials when it's this dire? So, I would really appreciate your guidance. And that's for our health director, Giezi.
Thank you for that question, council member Emmanuel. My, my first ask of the community, including council members, is really to follow the basic expectations that are laid out very clearly, and I think people know. What we are seeing with disease spread is that it is close contact situations that are somewhat in employment settings, but also primarily in settings that are related to choices that individuals are making, related to family and social gatherings and activities that are not required, like work might be. We have amazing partnerships across the community in settings where entities are doing things to really lower risk, so educational settings, business settings. And I think that that partnership is going really well. The change we're seeing now with case numbers is not surprising. We've moved indoors. Respiratory diseases always increase at this point in time, or start to increase. And basic prevention of six feet distance and wearing masks and not gathering with people besides your household and your close connected family are really what we need to do. My challenge to you as policymakers is that it's very difficult to legislate that type of behavior that we all need to count on one another to do. We are talking and working through some documentation processes currently that we are looking for support for related to really calling out where we are seeing public entities not following expectations. And we will be, we are taking complaints about that. We are doing individual follow-up and education when necessary, but also importantly, we're starting to document that we are doing that education and that we are sharing the expectations documents and really making it clear that we need it to be understood across the community that if everyone doesn't mean into this, it's going to get significantly worse. It's different than an enforcement process, but I also think that there is value to naming what is needed, educating about what is needed, and then documenting that. And that is currently what we are moving forward as a process, imperfect as it is. I also would say that I think an enforcement or a legislative process isn't a magic wand. And while it may be asked of all of you, and it may be something that we really do need to explore quickly, and I've asked for some example potential legislation, I also don't want anybody on council to think that it is a magic solution. The tough part about this is that the magic solution is really each of us making those tough decisions to do things for a significantly longer period of time that are hard, which is keeping distance, wearing a cloth-based mask, and making sure your group is small. Those are, we're not powerless, which is a line that I used last week, and I still feel is really important. Each of us is able to do something, and I continue to encourage council to use your voice to call people to that action and to have leadership in this community name that we, that this is not a health department need, this is a community need. And I really look for that support from all of you so that it's not we saying that, but that all of you are naming that and asking partners across the spectrum to name that and, and to support the process of credible complaints coming in and credible documentation of those complaints.
Council member Anderson.
Yeah, council president, and thank you, Ms. Giezi. I think council member Emmanuel's question really just touched on, you know, what I was thinking about, and I definitely want to continue to raise up the voices of people who have contacted us because they are concerned with this very sobering data, and I think wanting very much to be able to, to make kind of measurable change or create an impact, perhaps through policy. And I'm wondering, not to put you on the spot here with this either, but this kind of just occurred to me as I was listening to your response to council member Emmanuel's question, you know, if people are very interested in figuring out how to make an impact as, you know, as citizens, what are some things that would be useful for them to do? Would there be policies that would be important for them to lobby for? Would it be, you know, social media type of work? Is there anything that comes to mind? And if, if, if that's true on the spot, you know, you can answer me later too.
Thank you, council member Anderson. Probably reflecting a bit more on that question and giving a more full response would be appropriate. I do think that there's a lot of power that is had in individuals showing by their choices what they see as important. So, much pressure is had when businesses and entities are pushed by individuals to hold big events or to have a wedding or a birthday party or something. And I think the more we can notice and honor the creative ways to do things and still support our businesses and our public entities, the better. So, I would strongly encourage people to find ways to continue to find safe ways to support businesses. We have, for example, a Thanksgiving holiday coming up, and pushing each other to find creative ways to do that and support their local entities, I think, would be a really powerful thing to do, that people can do. They can encourage their own business, if they're a business owner, or encourage other businesses to have face mask policies, and to find ways, if someone can't wear a face covering, to meet their needs and not enter a building if they can't use a face covering, rather than allow people to be in public spaces without a face covering on. I think policies around meeting needs with small groups is another thing that are, we can encourage others to do. There is, we are learning in this pandemic about where the differences can be made. The science is showing us again that small groups and face masks can make a huge difference. And I think as we think through best ways to have policy at an organizational level, at a community level, even just as a family policy, those things might be considerations that I would have people look at locally.
Thank you so much. And yeah, just to sort of reiterate from our, I think, our previous discussion and council member Emmanuel's comments, I think the council is very ready to support any needed efforts in this, in this fight against COVID. Thank you.
Council member Worthman.
Thank you, council president. Thank you, Ms. Giezi, as well, for helping with this update today. Just wanted to ask about, if you have a sense where a lot of the cases in this community are originating? Maybe that's difficult to tell, given where we're at with contact tracing, but just wondered if you have a sense for, for where, yeah, predominantly, you know, the, the cases are originating?
Thank you, council member Worthman, for that question. And as you indicated, it's gotten more and more difficult to really have strong information to discern that because of the number of cases that we have. We do know that this disease spreads when people are in closer proximity and when a face covering isn't used. So, we do have disease spread in, in congregate settings, places where there are vulnerable populations, and the people serving those vulnerable populations have to, for some reason, get closer than six feet. So, we know that that is one place where disease spread is happening. We also know that we have considerable disease spread within families and within households. So, where there is one individual that is a positive case and there are multiple people living together, whether it's young adults all living together in a home, or it's a family living together, we see disease spread in those situations as well. We also have some pretty clear evidence that disease spread in close contact social environments is a large driver of activity, not just in Eau Claire, but across the state and nation. So, those are social settings and sporting settings and settings where, kind of by definition, we are closer together. Again, challenging because we are social people. So, those are the places that, not differently than other communities, we are seeing spread. Think uniquely in Eau Claire, we are seeing a bit less spread in some of our work sites and school sites where they've worked really hard to design the space inside so that either there's lower occupancy or there's distance built in to how those operations are run. Everything from voting, which you all experienced, you have the policies that were put in place for that, to some of our K-12 buildings, have done a really good job in designing their operations, so spread is minimized. And that has made a big difference in this community. I think our case numbers would be significantly higher if that wasn't in fact true.
That's helpful. If I could just follow up, I, I wondered about events. I, I assume that, for example, if someone applies for a liquor license for an event and, and it's over a certain number of people, that we're probably not granting things like that right now, or how does that work? Or does it just depend?
And the licensing process happens through the city, so maybe I'd ask Mr. Solberg to start with the response to that, if that's okay?
Yes, thank you, council member Worthman. We, we've had very few requests for special events and, and group activities such as that. Whenever we do have a rare one, we, we, you know, stress the importance of the health expectations and the social distancing, and I believe there was one walk that was conducted not too long ago. So, we haven't seen the requests that you would see in a, in a typical year, like in 2019 or 2018. I, I, I think we would discourage any kind of event for the foreseeable future that would involve a setting like that, that would, that would promote, you know, the, the unresponsible behavior that would typically accompany.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Council member Greiner.
Sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. I would just add to that, council member Worthman and my opponent, council president Wohl, that we are working through the Chippewa Valley Economic Recovery Task Force with a, a group of entities that really represent all of those, the sectors that plan bigger in-house events, so, you know, the places in Eau Claire that might hold and sponsor a
that might hold and sponsor a convention or a wedding, those kinds of places. We're working with them to really continue to support the education and best practice about not doing those large-scale events, despite not having an order that disallows them. But I think that is definitely something that is happening in other communities and is concerning because of the potential spread in those types of gatherings.
Thank you.
Councilmember Greger.
Well, thank you, Ms. Giezzi and Mr. Solberg. Just my question is for Health Director Giezzi. You know, obviously, today, our neighboring state of Minnesota, Governor Walz there announced some pretty significant restrictions on particularly bars and restaurants to be closed starting this weekend at 10:00 p.m. And he actually, I watched his presentation today at 2:00, and they seem to have quite a bit of information about where spread was happening, particularly at gatherings and bars and restaurants and weddings and funerals and such. And it seems like we could learn a lot from the data they've collected. Perhaps Wisconsin has a lot of similar data, and obviously, the recommendations and the expectations that are put forth by the Health Department are in line with where we're seeing that spread. But I guess my question would be, and obviously, we don't know what the governor is going to say exactly tonight here in Wisconsin, but what do you see the impact of the decision that's been made in Minnesota being on western Wisconsin, where there may be people coming across the border, maybe for more late-night activities? Obviously, the announcement was just made, but I guess what are some of your initial thoughts about how we may have to be particularly proactive in western Wisconsin because of that?
So thank you for the question, Councilmember Greger. Certainly, other states have made choices about state-level policies that are working to address the risk associated with certain types of activities. And at state level, Wisconsin has been challenged with doing some of those things. And I think this example will be one that we, you know, I'm certain we'll be talking about tomorrow as Health Department Directors on the western side of the state. We do meet daily to talk and walk through this type of issue. The ongoing support that we can give to all of our entities in really following the basic guidelines, whether they're open at 10:00 or at 2:00 in the morning, if they maintain face coverings, if they maintain distance, and do some basic, practical things. As hard as it is in some of those settings, is really the strategy that's been encouraged in Wisconsin at this point. But certainly, there likely will be an impact, at least on those border counties of individuals crossing the border that are choosing not to follow the basics of COVID prevention. And it will be a difficult situation, I am sure. There are settings where the risk is higher, and that has been published in research. It's also been true that some of those settings have been able to find ways to decrease the risk and might continue to support ways that our businesses can be successful and have the risk be changed by their operations. And certainly, some bars and restaurants have made decisions not just similar to what you described Minnesota has done, and certainly could make those decisions independently in Eau Claire and in other communities to decrease the spread of COVID-19.
Councilmember Jeong.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Giezzi. I have a follow-up to Councilmember Greger. Actually, that was something that I was going to ask you, too. We recently just seen the update. I know Eau Claire is continuing, the COVID cases is continuing to rise, and I know it's impacted many, many communities. Particularly, I know within the last week, I've known of a couple folks in nearby communities that passed due to COVID. And I just wanted to kind of chime in in regards to social gatherings and the capacity limit. Minnesota did just announce that they are going to go into a phased approach with social gathering limiting that to 10 people for indoors and outdoor gatherings. Three household regulations, including the host, effective on 10:00 p.m. Friday, November 13th. And then, as far with the exception, there was, including weddings and funerals, that's a phased approach with 50-person limit on November 27th and then going down to 25 persons in December. I understand that since that Eau Claire has increased our capacity number. Can you share with us where we're currently at with that and if there's any plans, any really proactive plans? Because it's really, you know, I know this is a tough topic to kind of put all the weight on you at this moment, but we also understand, you know, the type of community we have. We have a lot of vulnerable elders, seniors, and individuals with, you know, pre-existing conditions that could be severely impacted by this virus, under no control of their own. But so can you share if that's something that you foresee us to look at where our current numbers are for that? And if we have any plans on worrying that again?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Jeong. In our expectations document, which actually has been static since we published that in the middle of October, as far as the numbers go, we actually lowered our number from a social gathering standpoint down to 10. We really asked people to keep their social connections to 10 or fewer people. Household numbers, obviously, greater than that, but no more than an additional 10 people for those social gatherings. And for gatherings outside of that private social setting to be at 25 or fewer, which is considerably lower than what we had previously. We also retained the 25, I'm sorry, the 50% occupancy of public spaces. All of the national models and recommendations actually say that at our case numbers, we should be all staying home. We are not saying that. The state is not saying that right now. Similarly, Minnesota also didn't say that. But really, the safest thing to do right now is to not be in gatherings beyond your immediate family or your household, and not to gather for any events that are of any size outside your household, especially if physical distance can't be maintained. We're exploring adding some of that additional language to the expectation document, but just to cue people into the fact that we did a month ago, even before this most drastic increase, say, we were at a point, at that point, we were over 35 cases a day, which is when, at a national level, all of the national experts say we need to not have this kind of increase happen. We really said 10, if it's your private home, don't invite any more than, don't have any more than 10 people, and if it is in a public space, a gathering of no more than 25.
Thank you, Ms. Giezzi. I don't see any other questions at this time, and I, again, appreciate, I'm sorry, Councilmember Greger.
Thank you, President Walden. Ms. Giezzi, just one other question for you, and that's about the end of the governor's mask mandate is currently scheduled to end on November 21st. Obviously, that could be extended as it has in the past, but it also has been challenged in the past and is currently under challenge, is my understanding. So I guess what my question would be, is there a local order or legislation drafted yet for Eau Claire City or county to act to replace that mask order? And would there be a way to have that be ready by our next meeting in case the governor's order is ended?
For that question, Councilmember Greger, the statewide mask order is certainly an important tool for setting an expectation. We have that same expectation in our current document locally, and it actually is even more strongly worded that we expect entities to have a policy for face mask use. One of the challenges with the state order and with many states that have had this order is it's very difficult to enforce an individually focused face mask order. We have not, nor is there any entity, any community across Wisconsin that I'm aware of enforced at an individual level someone not wearing their face mask. It's difficult, and it's, there are lots of challenges around that. But it does set a clear expectation, and we know the research shows that it makes a difference when people do wear face masks and when there's a policy in place to do that. We are, we have talked at our discussions between legal and the Health Department about interest in having, if the state order goes away, having a local ordinance, council being aware that enforcement is difficult with that, but it does set a clear expectation from council, and we would be prepared to bring that forward if necessary. More importantly, I would ask for strong encouragement of, again, our community entities in developing and enforcing a face mask policy within their operations. Again, also importantly, allowing for services to be provided to individuals for those small instances where a face covering can't be used, that those individuals still have an ability to access some of those services. So I think there are opportunities, and yes, we are working with legal to explore what might be an ordinance locally.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giezzi. Again, I don't see any other, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lor.
Thank you, President Walden. I think I want to know if we have any, who will be answering, but Ms. Giezzi, is there anywhere that we can, going back to the previous amendment that we have postponed about it? Is there any way that we can get back to that idea and refine that, had the community working on, and bring back to the table? Because since now that we have cases increasing in the community, that we need, as a leader in the community, we need to protect the people in here. So I don't know, is, you know, Mr. Solberg or Ms. Giezzi, you will be able to answer that? And then, I just would like to see that proposal come back onto the city council table, and so we can look through the railway, you know?
Hey, I can, I can help with that. The previous proposal that was brought before the city council, when it was delayed, included an amendment in some language to create a task force and create certain deliberate events, and then bring it back to the city council with timeframes, I believe it's January for the creation of a task force, and then I believe it's June to bring recommendations from that task force back. The efforts to fulfill the requirements of the council at that time to create the task force are ongoing right now along those lines. That wouldn't be brought back, those requirements that were added to the delay would not be satisfied, I believe, in a manner fast enough to address something immediate, which is, you know, which is most concerning right now, and where Health Director Giezzi had mentioned direct legislation, or, you know, drafting of something that's specific, or are there other mechanisms that we can use immediately without doing any changes that would help compliance with it? Understanding that compliance is only one, or enforcement is only one leg of the tripod with it, just personal responsibility and doing the right thing. So that would be unlikely to be brought back in a timely manner, and kind of led to Health Director Giezzi's response with, to Councilmember Greger's question about direct legislation and other routes that they're exploring with legal to see what would be timely options to address an immediate concern, you know, in a matter of days or weeks from now, so.
Thank you again, Ms. Giezzi and Mr. Solberg, in regards to the COVID-19 update. Obviously, a lot of great questions, a lot of concern from our community, and, you know, I know that, I know everyone's working as hard as they can to try and take us out of this as quickly as we can, and I'm confident that we're going to keep working together and we're going to keep making strides, and know that we'll continue to be as diligent at that as we can. I think it's been emphasized numerous times that it really is, again, at the end, about all of us as individuals, and each of us doing everything we can to follow the recommendations of our health officials, and I think that's going to be the greatest tool that we can use right now. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do councilmembers have any questions regarding the consent agenda or wish to remove any item for separate consideration? And I am not seeing any. On a motion that by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, the consent agenda has been moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, and again, with some technical difficulties, City Attorney Nick will call the roll. Mr. Nick.
Thank you, Council President. Hopefully, members can hear me, and we'll see if this works better, that so far, I've been able to hear all of you, whereas the city clerk is not as you vote. Beaton.
Aye.
Aye.
Jeong.
Aye.
Anderson. Thank you. Hopefully, that will continue to work. I heard all of them promptly, with a slight delay with Kristofferson, but hopefully, this will be effective for this meeting, and we'll do our best. Gregor.
Aye.
War.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Anderson. Thank you. Hopefully, that will continue to work. I heard all of them promptly with a slight delay with Christopherson, but hopefully this will be effective for this meeting and we'll, we'll do our best to figure it out going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So the consent, consent agenda has passed. We have one proclamation today and one commendation. I would first of all like to welcome Commander Rod Anderson as, as we recognize Veterans Day, which is tomorrow. Mr. Anderson, Commander Anderson?
Yes.
Yes, I appreciate your patience and I'm going to go ahead and share our proclamation in, in recognition of Veterans Day. And it reads like this, "Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the tens of millions of Americans who have served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life, and hundreds of thousands of Americans have died while serving our country. And whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas the abiding patriotism and enduring devotion of our veterans and their families to the ideals on which the United States is founded never failed to inspire us. And whereas all citizens must strive to ensure that our country remains a land worthy of the great love our veterans have shown for it. And Veterans Day commemorates the end of major hostilities of World War I at the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918. And in 1954, President Dwight D. Eisenhower declared November 11th to be Veterans Day, a day dedicated to world peace, to honor all veterans of the U.S. Armed Services. Now therefore I, Terry Weld, President of the Eau Claire City Council, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2020, as Veterans Day in the city of Eau Claire. And I encourage all people to acknowledge and honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights." Commander Anderson?
I thank you very much for this, President Terry Weld and the city council for proclaiming November 11th of 2020 as Veterans Day in the city of Eau Claire. It's honoring all the veterans and their families who have served throughout all the wars the United States has been involved in. And I'd like to make this announcement. Eau Claire Veterans Patriotic Program Day of 2020, November 11th, 2020, the American Legion Post 53, at 634 Water Street in Eau Claire. At 10:30 tomorrow morning, the inside program is an opening program with Ron Duff Martin, Eau Claire Patriotic Council Chair. The post colors, the mixed honor guard from local veterans organizations. The opening prayer will be by Lamond Miller, the National Anthem by Becky Sullivan. Welcome remarks, Ron Duff Martin, Eau Claire Patriotic Council Chair. Guest speaker, Eric Kildon, Eau Claire County Veteran Service Officer. Outside program, the play, "Pole," Ron Duff Martin. The Laying of the Re, Kay Olson, Golden Star Mother and Vice Chair of the Eau Claire Patriotic Council. The rifle salute, mixed honor guard from local veterans organizations. Taps by Bob Morris. And the closing, Ron Duff Martin, Eau Claire Patriotic Council Chair. I invite anybody that watched you to come to this. We start at 10:30 tomorrow morning. And thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you, Commander Anderson, and for all your service and all of our veterans. It's appreciated. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Our second, our commendation for, for this afternoon is for a longtime employee of the city of Eau Claire, Mr. Dale Peters, who served our community for, for 31 years. And we wanted to take this moment to, to recognize Mr. Peters and his service to the city of Eau Claire. And Mr. Peters, before I keep going, I should just make sure that you're there. Good afternoon?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
I can, yes, welcome.
Oh, thanks for having me. It's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon.
Sure. So we have a, a couple of things that we, that we'd like to, to start off with. And the first is a, is a plaque that we would like to present to you at, at some point here, somehow, some way, but we will get it to you. And the plaque reads as this, "The members of the Eau Claire City Council, together with the city staff and the citizens of Eau Claire, express heartfelt appreciation to Dale Peters for his respectful, strong servant leadership, high ethical standards, steady hand on the managerial helm, selfless commitment to collaboration, and dedication to the Eau Claire community from 1989 to 2020." And a quotation is noted at the bottom of the plaque and it reads as follows, "We hire good people, we train them well, provide them the correct tools, and they do great things for this city." Mr. Peters, again, thank you for your 31 years. It is greatly appreciated. I also, we also had a, well, we have a tribute video, numerous individuals from throughout the, the community and some from throughout the state, past employees, current employees, council members, community partners, all contributed to a video tribute that, that was put together, again, with the fact that we are in the midst of, of a COVID-19 and not able to actually have a, a celebration or a send-off. And so this was put together to allow that opportunity for our community to, to share their, their well wishes, funny stories, happy stories, and just experiences that they've had with you over the year. Unfortunately, we are experiencing technical difficulties and will not be able to share. We are, it was our hope to share a couple of those with you this evening. There, there are obviously numerous and way too many to share the, the whole video, but unfortunately, we're not able to, to share the little bits and pieces that we wanted to. But we will be sharing that video with you along with the plaque. And I'm sure you'll get a, a great deal of enjoyment. And I know that all those that had an opportunity to share in it enjoyed, enjoyed doing so. And again, Mr. Peters, you know, we've, we've had several opportunities to, to wish you well and to, to thank you. And I know that, that as our community continues to grow, as our, continues, continues to be a, a, a great city, we will look back to, to, to your service and to all the other city employees over the last 170 years that, that have made all those things come true. So with that, again, I want to thank you. We also have Mr. Solberg, which I believe is an ongoing tradition, and he has another award or gift or recognition that he would like to share with you. Mr. Solberg?
Welcome back, Mr. Peters. In the grand tradition of our community services department and prior to that, the public works department, we have a historic district sign for you that will be delivered upon the conclusion of the meeting that says Dale's Way on it. I'm sure you've seen dozens, if not hundreds, of these over the course of your career. And to make a dual purpose, like you tried to run an efficient tight ship here, on the back side, it says Tally's Way. So it can have two, two uses for your household. I'm not sure which side will be used more, but we wanted to make sure that you had your sign that you earned so well over the last 31 years.
Mr. Peters?
Wow. I'm, I'm humbled and I, I had some longer prepared remarks, but given the sobering news of where we're at and, and I guess the, the time of the evening, I, I just, I guess I would just say that with, you know, the current challenges, it, it is just really important that we, you know, take some time to remember the, the good things that are happening around us and the strengths that we have. And, you know, the biggest strength that we have as a community and the council and an organization is that we intentionally value and nurture collaboration and cooperation and partnerships over divisions. And this is going to be more important than ever as we take on this fight with COVID going into the winter. And I just hope that you can all remember that and, and just place a really high value on, because there's a lot of pressure on, on everyone. And, you know, keeping that focus on the collaboration and the cooperation and the partnerships is the way we're going to get through this as a community. We have an amazing organization with employees that go above and beyond every day to make the lives of the people they touch better. And that's also very, very true today in this world and this fight that we have with COVID. I would just say it's been a privilege and an honor to work alongside so many amazing and talented employees and council members. Each of you are dedicated to making Eau Claire a greater place. And I just thank you from the bottom of my heart for the opportunity to be your city manager and your coworker. I think about you every day and I wish all of you much continued future success.
Thank you, Dale. We appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right. Moving on to our business agenda, beginning with agenda item number seven. A resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with the town of Wheaton for the city of Eau Claire Fire Department to provide emergency ambulance transport services to Wheaton residents. Deputy Chief Schultz? Good evening.
Good afternoon. There's not much to say to this other than the original agreement was for us to cover the area on County Highway F and west, to the west, along with a couple of streets south of Highway 29 off of County Highway F. Chippewa, City of Chippewa and Chippewa Falls Fire Department are declining to cover Highway 29 for ambulance. So the town of Wheaton came back to us and asked us to, to pick up that remaining area of the township, which is part of the agenda. It will include Highway 29 and also, I believe it's 90th Avenue. I don't have the map in front of me, but there's not too many residents. It's mainly just the highway that we'll be covering in addition to the area of County Highway F and west. Any questions anybody has?
Any questions from council? I do not see any, Deputy Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
On a motion then by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, City Attorney Nick, please call the roll.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Bergy. Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. John.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
I have 11 a.
Thank you. And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number eight is a resolution creating a new voting ward within the city of Eau Claire. Council have any questions for Ms. Repel in regards to the new voting ward? Seeing none. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emmanuel and seconded by Councilmember Gregor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Again, seeing none. City Attorney Nick, please call the roll.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel. Gregor. Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. John.
Aye.
Anderson. Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy. I have 11 a.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number nine is an ordinance amending Title 18 entitled Zoning Code of the City of Eau Claire Related to Commercial Districts. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Allen from last night's presentation? And I'm not seeing any. On a motion then by Councilmember Klinkhammer and seconded by Councilmember Lor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? And I am not seeing any. Council Vice President Emmanuel, did you have?
Nope, just ready for one of it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. City Attorney Nick, please call the roll.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregor. Klinkhammer.
No.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. John.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Anderson. Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
No.
Christopherson.
No.
I have eight three.
And that item passes.
I'll have to change my vote.
Pardon? And that item passes eight to three? Agenda item number 10, an ordinance rezoning property located at 4223 Jeffers Road from R1A to R3P and to adopt the general development plan for apartment buildings with 32 to 36 units. Again, does council have any questions for Mr. Allen from last night's presentation? Councilmember Worthman?
Yeah, Council President Weld, I think I heard Councilmember Gregor request to change his vote on the last agenda item during the call.
Okay. I, City Attorney Nick, I don't know if, I, I'm not, we're not able to hear the votes very well in here at all. We're only hearing a third of them, so.
I did hear it as an aye, but I would put that to Councilmember Gregor. I recorded it as an aye. Was that your intent?
Uh, no, I, I was confused about item we were on, so I, I meant to vote no.
So with, with leave of the chair, I would change Councilmember Gregor's vote from an aye to a nay, which would adjust the vote to seven four.
All right. That, that's fine. Again, that item passes seven to four. Again, back to the agenda item number 10. Were there any questions from council for Mr. Allen from last night's presentation? And again, not seeing any. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember- by Councilmember Jean, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. City Attorney Nick, please call the roll.
Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean. Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton. Gerg. Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
I have eleven, zero.
That item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Eleven is an ordinance annexing land to the City of Eau Claire located on the northwest corner of County Road T and County Line Road, Town of Wheaton, Chippewa County, as shown on the planning drawing number 20-3A, City of Eau Claire Petition Number 14336. Per Wisconsin statutes, an annexation ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body. Therefore, eight affirmative votes of the 11 elected council members are required for adoption. Good evening, Mr. Allen.
Good evening, Council President Walton, members of the council. I'm hoping you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
Great. Great, thank you. The next slide, I think, shows a map of the area in question here. It's item number seven. This is a reference again back to the plan commission agenda from last week, file 20-3A, and station of just over 80 acres being requested here. If you know the next slide, please. Just a little more specifically, the area question again, this is in just over the County Line Road into Chippewa County, Town of Wheaton, adjacent to Gateway Industrial Park. And as shown in the materials, it does say applicant in the City of Eau Claire. And the City of Eau Claire is in the process of purchasing these 80 acres from the mayor family, as their family farm. And again, two parcels here as noted, total in just over 80 acres inside. The intent here is to attach these eventually to the Gateway Industrial Park. The purpose of this would be in increasing essentially and connecting to, through the Chippewa County's new industrial park concept, which is looking at a minimum requirement of 200 acres. So property will be combined, again, with remainder of the Gateway Industrial Park here to meet that 200-acre requirement that Chippewa County is looking for with their industrial park expansion. So with that, again, the land, surrounded vacant land is identified in the 2015 conference plan for industrial use and expansion thereof. And it is recommended for your approval here from the plan commission at their meeting last week. And I'll answer your question.
Any questions from council for Mr. Allen? I am not seeing any. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
On a motion then by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. City Attorney, please call the roll.
Klinkhammer. Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Gerg. Gerg.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor. Eleven, zero.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Twelve is a charter ordinance relating to the City Council on the reapportionment of the automatic districts of the City of Eau Claire. Adoption of a charter ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body. Therefore, eight affirmative votes are required of the 11 elected council members for adoption. Does council have any questions for Ms. Repel in regards to Agenda Item Number Twelve? Seeing none. On a motion then by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. City Attorney, please call the roll.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean. Anderson. Beaton.
Aye.
Gerg. Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor. Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Eleven, zero.
That item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Thirteen is an ordinance amending Table 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Parking, Stopping, and Standing Prohibited, and Title 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Vehicles and Traffic, relating to parking enforcement for electric vehicles and parking enforcement of unregistered vehicles. Does council have any questions for Ms. Ness from last night's presentation? And I am not seeing any questions. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Gregor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. City Attorney, please call the roll.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson. Beaton.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor. Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Eleven, zero.
And that item passes unanimously. We have one ordinance for introduction. Agenda Item Number Fourteen is an ordinance rezoning property located at the southwest corner of Old Town Hall Road and Graff Road from R3P to R2P, and to amend the general development plan for duplexes, twin homes, and a multifamily residential, and to allow for a reduced front yard setback for duplexes and twin homes. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up this, this ordinance this evening? Seeing no interest in that. We will move on to the Eau Claire City Council Budget Adoption and Agenda Item Number Fifteen. And there will be three votes, three resolutions under the Number Fifteen item. Number Fifteen is a resolution adopting the following proposed budgets and appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, for the General Fund, for the Ellie Phillips Memorial Public Library, and for the City County Health Department. Does council have any questions for Mr. Winzans? And I am not seeing any. On a motion then by Councilmember Klinkhammer and seconded by Councilmember Lor, the budget adoption for the General Fund is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to comment that in this particularly challenging time, both financially and certainly politically, that this is a budget that really does present the growing and caring values of this community. And I want to commend Mr. Winzans and our retired city manager for really searching and working all of the angles to make this a balanced budget, and finding ways in which we can meet our changing needs and values, and still maintaining the same high level of service and community connectivity that we have come to expect. I'm very pleased to be able to support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you so much. And I want to echo everything that my colleague, Councilmember Christopherson shared. In particular, in a way, I hope Mr. Peters is not listening. Maybe he's putting his feet up and just relaxing. But in the event that he is listening, I wanted to just really share my heartfelt appreciation. And maybe somebody from staff could convey this as well, but just, this is incredibly hard. Like, this year is epically hard for all sorts of reasons. And to bring back a budget that really is reflecting the values of our community and the priorities that council set forth as policymakers is incredible. I think it was just incredibly cooperative and incredibly helpful to set us up for success, us meaning our city, with the new city manager, when we are able to have a new city manager. I see just really an effective team of the ball for success. And whoever is up to bat for this ball is going to have success. And when Eau Claire, our city, succeeds, then our whole community succeeds. So just want to say thank you. And I also want to acknowledge the departments who put forth requests that did not get funded. And that's always hard. It's disappointing because every one of the requests has value and merit. They were put forth with professional expertise. And I wish we had a magic wand where we could grow the possibilities. But, you know, we all, we all know that's not possible. And so just want to acknowledge and appreciate that. So I also want to appreciate citizens who really help to keep us accountable of, you know, looking at community policing in an amplified way. And thank our chief of police for helping come to the table with some solutions. This is just super peaceful. And I just really appreciate that. I do not take that for granted or lightly. Very much appreciated. Thank you, everybody. Nice work.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other discussion in regards to the General Fund adoption for fiscal year 2021? Seeing none. City Attorney, please call the roll.
On the budget, General Fund, so 15A we'll call it, we start with Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton. Gerg. Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor. Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Eleven, zero.
That item passes unanimously. Agenda Item 15B, A Resolution Adopting The Proposed Budget For The Ellie Phillips Memorial Public Library For The Fiscal Year 2021. Does council have any questions for Mr. Winzans in regards to this agenda item? Seeing none. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Jean, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Council Vice President Emanuel.
Could you please repeat which item this is? Maybe 15B?
Well, it's, it's the second bullet, second bullet point under the Agenda Item Number Fifteen, the Ellie Phillips Memorial Public Library.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Seeing none. City Attorney, please call the roll.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson. Beaton.
Aye.
Gerg. Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Eleven, zero.
That item passes unanimously. The third bullet point under Agenda Item Number Fifteen for the City County Health Department, there's a resolution adopting the proposed budget for the City County Health Department for the fiscal year 2021. Does council have any questions for Mr. Winzans in regards to this agenda item? Seeing none. On a motion then by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. City Attorney, please call the roll.
Anderson. Beaton.
Aye.
Gerg. Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. Jean.
Aye.
Eleven, zero.
That item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Sixteen is a resolution adopting the following proposed budgets for various agencies and utilities of the City of Eau Claire for fiscal year 2021: Economic Development, Community Enhancement, The Downtown Fund, Cemetery Maintenance, Hazardous Materials Response, Landville, Landfill Remediation, Canine Fund, Debt Service General Fund, TID 7, TID 8, TID 9, TID 10, TID 11, TID 12, TID 13, Water Utility, Sewer Utility, Stormwater Utility, Parking Fund, Public Transit, Hobbs Municipal Ice Center, Fairfax Municipal Pool, Risk Management, Central Equipment, and Redevelopment Authority. Does council have any questions for Mr. Winzans in regards to this agenda item? Seeing none. On a motion then by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregor.
Then, just to go off of some of other council comments on the budget, I thought this would be a good juncture to show appreciation as well as acknowledge an amendment coming up on the fee and license schedule later on. And just to maybe avoid any confusion, there's no, there's no change to the, to the budget for my amendment, otherwise that would be coming up here. But rather, it'll be during the fee and license schedule. My amendment's related to bus fares for, for the Eau Claire transit system. But yeah, I just want to show my appreciation for staff and crafting this, this budget all the way, you know, through the General Fund down to our agencies and utilities budgets. And yeah, I think it was definitely a challenging year, but it just, it just gets to show, you know, what the professionals that we have working for us and, and listening to the community's priorities, the council's priorities, and being able to get the job done. So, so thank you. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Any other discussion in regards to Agenda Item Number Sixteen? Seeing none. City Attorney, please call the roll.
Thank you. And just for clarity, this is
time in 2020 and also those assessments for property owners that are on a multi-year payment plan and moving those forward to the property tax bills. So this authorizes those special assessments to be submitted to Eau Claire County and to be included in the property tax bills that are mailed in early December. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Winsands? I do not see any. Thank you. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Gregor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, City Attorney, please call the roll.
Burgie. Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson. Eaton.
Aye.
11-0.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 18 is a resolution appropriating the 2021 capital projects identified in the 2021 to 2025 adopted capital improvement plan for the city of Eau Claire. Mr. Winsands.
Thank you, Council President Weld. This agenda item appropriates funding for the 2021 projects that were included in the capital improvement plan, which was approved earlier this year by the city council. Those projects are contained in the back of your operating budget book and are consistent with those projects listed for funding in 2021 that were included in the 2021 through 2025 capital improvement plan. With that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Winsands? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Winsands, one of the neighborhoods in District Four has some special interest in the capital improvement project on the trail running through from Half Moon. And I understand that the DOT grant has been approved and that that project is going to move into 2022. Is that correct?
I'm actually going to defer to interim city manager Solberg. I'm not familiar with that particular grant, and he may have additional information.
Yes, the Half Moon Trail was selected for the Transportation Alternatives Program through the Wisconsin DOT, and it's scheduled in the 2022-2023 funding cycle for the DOT, and we've requested it to be as early in that cycle as possible for 2022. So barring any shifts or changes on the West Dot side, that's when we're planning to do the construction on that trail.
Thank you, interim city manager. I just want my colleagues to be aware that this application is an 80% share from the state to the city, so it's 80/20 instead of 100%. It's an excellent opportunity, and it's well worth the wait. Thanks so much, Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Any other questions for Mr. Winsands in regards to agenda item number 18? And I do not see any other questions. On a motion then by Councilmember Klinkhammer and seconded by Councilmember Lor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, City Attorney, please call the roll.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eaton.
Aye.
Burgie.
Aye.
11-0.
That item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 19 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds and authorizing an officer to declare official intent for federal income tax purposes. Mr. Winsands.
Council President Weld, in order for us to issue general obligation tax-exempt bonds and reimburse ourselves for expenses that we've already incurred, the city council needs to issue this declaration of intent, which is a declaration on the part of the city council indicating that we do intend to issue bonds, tax-exempt bonds, to finance those improvements. It is typical for the city of Eau Claire, as well as many other municipalities, to proceed with projects in the spring and early summer, but not actually issue the bonds to pay for those projects until after those projects have commenced. So that's what this resolution is authorizing. It just, like I said, allows us to reimburse ourselves for any project expenses that are incurred prior to the date of the bond issuance. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions from Council for Mr. Winsands? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Jean, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, City Attorney, please call the roll.
Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eaton.
Aye.
Burgie.
Aye.
11-0.
That item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 19 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds and authorizing an officer to declare official intent for federal income tax purposes. Mr. Winsands.
Council President Weld, in order for us to issue general obligation tax-exempt bonds and reimburse ourselves for expenses that we've already incurred, the city council needs to issue this declaration of intent, which is a declaration on the part of the city council indicating that we do intend to issue bonds, tax-exempt bonds, to finance those improvements. It is typical for the city of Eau Claire, as well as many other municipalities, to proceed with projects in the spring and early summer, but not actually issue the bonds to pay for those projects until after those projects have commenced. So that's what this resolution is authorizing. It just, like I said, allows us to reimburse ourselves for any project expenses that are incurred prior to the date of the bond issuance. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions from Council for Mr. Winsands? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Jean, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, City Attorney, please call the roll.
Aye.
Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eaton.
Aye.
Burgie. Christopherson.
Aye.
Worthman. 11-0.
That item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 20 is a single resolution approving the 2021 budgets for the business improvement districts within the city of Eau Claire and authorization to levy special assessments: the South Barstool Business Improvement District, the West Grand Avenue Business Improvement District, the Water Street Business Improvement District, and the North Barstool Medical Business Improvement District. Mr. Winsands.
Thank you, Council President Weld. The four business improvement districts within the city of Eau Claire, by forming those districts, the property owners have agreed to levy an additional tax upon themselves or upon the properties located within those districts. As such, each district is governed by a board, and those boards submit and approve budgets that are included within the 2021 operating budget of the city. This resolution approves those business improvement districts' budgets and authorize us to levy those special assessments against properties located within the district in order to implement those expenditure budgets. These budgets have been reviewed and recommended by the board of directors of each of the business improvement districts. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Any questions from Council in regards to agenda item number 20 for Mr. Winsands? And I do not see any. On a motion then by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Eaton, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, City Attorney, please call the roll.
Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eaton.
Aye.
Burgie.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
11-0.
That item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 21 is a resolution authorizing an application to the Wisconsin Public Service Commission for a water utility rate increase. Mr. Winsands.
Thank you, Council President Weld. The city of Eau Claire, as the operator of a municipal water utility, is required to maintain a system of user charges in order to continue to operate and pay for that utility. Water utilities in the state of Wisconsin are regulated by the Public Service Commission, and we do periodically apply to the Public Service Commission for water utility rate increases. The last rate increase for the water utility in the city of Eau Claire was in 2014. Since then, we've undertaken numerous capital projects at the treatment plant regarding the filtration system, and we also are anticipating future improvements that will require additional capital expense. Last year, we did apply to the Wisconsin Public Service Commission for a rate increase and are currently still working through that process with the Public Service Commission, and anticipate that that process will continue into 2021. This resolution authorizes us to continue that process by applying to the Wisconsin Public Service Commission for a water utility rate increase. With that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Any questions from Council for Mr. Winsands? Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Winsand. Question for you about rate increases during the time of COVID. I remember at one point in time hearing some directives that the PSC had given to utilities in Wisconsin. I'm wondering if just the current public health pandemic has any influence on the application and the requests that the city's been making in 2021 and likely 2020 and 2021.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Emanuel. The Public Service Commission has not given any direction or directives concerning rate increases. In fact, I think that they are somewhat inundated with requests from water utilities for increases, judging by the turnaround time that it's been taking to review our materials. The pronouncements that came out earlier this year had more to do with late fees regarding existing utility customers and the waiver or the ability of utilities to waive those late fees and disconnect customers. Since we don't disconnect customers, that really hasn't been an issue for us. And we have been waiving the late fees for most of this year. In fact, just recently, the waiver of those late fees has expired. I hope that answers your question.
Any other questions from Council for Mr. Winsands? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Burgie and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there Seeing none. City Attorney Nick, please call the roll.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eaton.
Burgie.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor.
Aye.
11-0.
That item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 22 is a resolution amending the city of Eau Claire's schedule of fees and licenses effective January 1, 2021. Mr. Winsands.
Thank you, Council President Weld. So the schedule of fees and licenses is updated annually by city staff and comes forward to the city council at budget time as a resolution amending our schedule of fees and licenses. These are amendments that are recommended by the departments, you know, based upon, you know, customary increase or periodic increase of that schedule to recover the cost of providing these services to residents or others who are benefiting from those services. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions. I do know that Councilmember Gregor did have an amendment that was included in the council packet, and there may be other amendments as well this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Winsand. Any questions from Council? Seeing none. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Gregor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Winsand. On page 75 of the packet, there's a motion that I'd like to make to amend the fee and license schedule to decrease the income qualifying fare, which is one of the reduced fares, and then adding an additional fare option. That's outlined on page 76. And Council Vice President Emanuel is my seconder.
Okay. We have a motion to amend and a second. In regards to the amendment, do you wish to elaborate or share any more thoughts, Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Yeah, just to explain how I got here and found an opportunity once I found out how much it would cost to... how much it would cost to further reduce our income qualifying fare, which we created in July of 2018. We did it initially to kind of roll back the fare increase of 2018 for folks that qualify based on income, and it's something they could fill out a fare verification form that, you know, if their household income was below 185% of the federal poverty level, you know, something they could self-certify. So the form is on the city website, and this would, so for a single person, it would be for income below $22,500 a year roughly. And for a household of two, it'd be below $30,500 and so on. So we've had some utilization of that program. It's outlined that, you know, since it was created in July of 2018, we had 1,444 people use the income qualifying cash fare of $1.50 and then 184 passes purchased, the monthly passes. This amendment would, you know, would cost about $4,100 based on prior utilization of the program, because it would reduce the cash fare to 85 cents, the monthly pass to $25, and it would allow 13 single ride tickets to be purchased for $10 as a new option. And those are in line with our senior and passengers with disabilities, you know, fare structure. So one of the nice things about this is that it kind of simplifies our fare structure in that it, you know, it just adds income qualifying fare onto price points we already have. So this will help people meet their basic needs, increase accessibility and affordability for our transit system. It doesn't impact our operating budget, as I mentioned earlier, because due to the lower dollar amount, we've been finding that we've been saving, you know, more than that amount every year through lower diesel prices. We typically budget, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for diesel, and sometimes we're budgeting, you know, twice as much as we end up using just because they need to be conservative about, you know, how prices may change. So there's plenty of wiggle room within our budget for diesel. Plus, we're adding more hybrid buses onto the fleet. So I figure passing the savings on to our passengers is the way to go, particularly the passengers most in need. And I just want to thank, you know, city staff for helping me work through this. Community Services Director Renee Tyler was very helpful, Transit Manager Tom Wagner, and Planning Director Chad Wenzens. You know, part of our discussions, you know, for the last couple of years have included K through 12, but that's going to take a little bit more work. The transit development plan isn't complete yet and nor does it really address the question of K through 12 as we were hoping it would. And it would require a partnership with the school district, I think, to be able to do it responsibly. So this is really just focused on the income qualifying fare. Yeah, so I think that's what I have for introducing it. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregory. Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Hey, we're Council President Weld, and I wanted to give a huge appreciation to Councilmember Gregory for really taking the heavy lift in work to bring this proposal forward. When he called to ask if I was seconded, I was really honored and also immediately saw the value in this. Many years ago, I relied on public transportation to take my daughter to school before I would go to college myself and work. And it's a lot of work, doing the whole circuit of getting yourself ready, getting your kid ready, going, you know, getting yourself to the transit center, transferring a bus, dropping your child off, going to where you need to go next. And our city is very reliable. And also, when you're really short on change, there are many times where every penny counts. And so I really see the value, the impact that this is going to make for hundreds of families in our city. And we already know that over 184 income qualifying monthly passes have been sold, and we would certainly anticipate that trend to continue. So I just want to thank Councilmember Gregory for his ongoing advocacy and just speak to the high value I see in this, especially as we're able to do this in just about a budget-neutral way, where, as Councilmember Gregory shared, passing on the savings to our neighbors and friends who may need it the most.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other discussion in regards to the amendment? Councilmember Beaton.
Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Gregory and all of the city staff that were involved in helping with this amendment. We definitely think that this is needed and have always dreamed of even a fare-free system here in Eau Claire, which is, you know, we can see examples of that across the country. I have had, in the past, I've been nervous about, you know, like a fare system that might be, you know, overly complicated or something like that. But I feel really encouraged that in the near future of our transit system, we have some easier payment plans coming forward, both in the electronic systems and then also in the central offices of the new transit facility. And so I think that, you know, this is needed, and I think it'll also be, it'll come with ease once we have those new systems in place, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much, Councilmember Gregory. I am appreciative of your pursuing this reduced fare for persons experiencing low income. And I hope when we have an opportunity to see what the new plan is for transit, that we begin to see a broader vision for public transportation in growing and vital communities. Public transit isn't only a supported way of moving people to work, but it's also a support to our businesses. It's a support to shoppers. It's a support to tourism, people that are using their bicycles. And I think if we have a broader concept of how it moves an entire community, we can be more creative in how it's funded. I think this is a real important first step, and I thank you for bringing it forward.
Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Gregory.
Thank you, President Will, and just wanted to thank the rest of the council for your support and, you know, Vice President Emmanuel for your second of this and support along the way. Also, just want to acknowledge our, you know, obviously, our Transit Commission chair, you know, cheered his support via email or comment form. We heard last night from the president of the Chippewa Valley Transit Alliance as well. So it's good to see folks, you know, getting around this, and they obviously say our work is not done. And as Councilmember Beaton said, you know, there's steps along by the way to make, to increase accessibility through electronic fares and through having a transit center downtown that is staffed for helping passengers learn the system and buy passes and things like that. So, yeah, appreciate everyone helping along the way here.
Any other, thank you, Councilmember Gregory. Any other discussion? I can add my thoughts here, too. Again, I got introduced to Jeremy, I think, in 2011 when I was on the Planning Commission. And for the last nine years, almost 10 years now, I've, you know, he has continually advocated for healthy, accessible, efficient transit in our city and continues to work on that day in and day out. And it's been, it's been a pleasure and a privilege to watch your passion for that. And I think as a community, we're appreciative of it. So thank you, Councilmember Gregory. With that, seeing no other discussion, City Attorney, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lor.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Burgie. Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregory.
Aye.
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Eleven zero on the amendment.
All right, that amendment passes unanimously. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld, and I would also like to offer an amendment to the fee and license schedule for 2021. And this has to do with reducing the yearly license fee for the keeping of poultry in our city. And Councilmember Jean has agreed to be a seconder on this.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Worthman. So we have a motion from Councilmember Worthman, a seconded by Councilmember Jean. Councilmember Worthman, did you wish to share additional thoughts?
Thank you, Council President. And so what, if you can see on our screen here, the motion that I'm proposing, which would, in its very basic sense, reduce the poultry-keeping license, yearly license, from $40 a year down to $10 a year. Council members know from our discussion last night that as a city, we, the City Council is responsible for setting a portion of the overall fee. Now, this doesn't change any of the amounts that the Health Department, through the Health Board, sets either for inspection or for their annual poultry-keeping fee. But my intent here is, you know, essentially to recognize that when we passed this poultry-keeping ordinance, we really wanted to make it more accessible. We wanted people to have another option to think about how they can, you know, produce their own food, which I think we all understand is even more important, especially in these times. And so, you know, I think whether it's bus fares or whether it's swimming pool fares, you know, there are certain things that I think our council has shown that we value in our community and would like to make more accessible. And so I'm really thinking of this as an equity issue in reducing our annual fee to $10. And I guess I'm also hoping that the message is there that potentially the Board of Health will relook at the annual fee and the pre-inspection fee. You know, so what you see in front of you here would go some portion of the way to making this more accessible, and hopefully, other council members would consider supporting it.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Councilmember Jean.
Council President, I just wanted to voice my opinion and my support for the amendment. When Councilmember Worthman brought this up to me, I know it really resonated because I know a lot of our elders, especially in the Mon community and in other communities, you know, throughout Eau Claire, do raise poultry for consumption. And, you know, we have, especially during this time of the year, our elders are still, it's part of their daily lives of the cultural events that we have, especially during this year around its New Year's. And they use, you know, they raise chickens specifically just for this time of the year so that they're able to use it for traditional use and consumption, especially during the wintertime when it is cold and transportation access to, you know, food. We know we live in a food desert area for most of our communities. And so I could see, as the fees continue to go up, I think there's already a ton of fees that's associated with poultry, raising poultry. The feed is extremely expensive, and I've seen how much, you know, the community members that do raise poultry inject into that, and that's an investment for healthier consumption of food. So I do want to support this. We're not too far away from the outskirts, but it is due a transportation issue for a lot of folks. So I hope that this could be taken into consideration and gain support, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jean. Any other discussion? Councilmember Worthman, did you have?
Yeah, Council President, if I could just clarify, and I apologize for any, you know, confusion on this, too. But, you know, this is really around poultry-keeping for the laying of eggs. And, you know, I don't entirely remember what specifics are in terms of consumption, but this is really around the licensing for people that are keeping chickens for egg laying for the most part. So just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you so much. I have a question about this. Wondering approximately, what is the impact, the financial impact on this? And I know the city's general philosophy is trying to do cost recovery, so wondering about the impact of $30, which I understand is definitely a value to residents who are going to take out this type of license. I'm just wondering if there's a, if staff feel like this is feasible or, yeah, just a little conversation about that.
Mr. Wenzens?
Yes, thank you for your question, Councilmember Emmanuel. So two parts to it, at least that I heard. The first part being whether or not there's a financial impact. And, I mean, there is, but it's very nominal. We have not issued a large number of licenses for keeping of poultry. I think that really, in my mind, it gets more to the second part of your question, which has to do with, you know, the philosophy around, and the policy question around cost recovery and whether or not, you know, that is the policy of the City Council. At $10, we will not be recovering our costs. When these fees were last reviewed and set, you know, the determination was that $40 was the level that we needed to be at for cost recovery. There are a number of individuals involved in processing or touching the applications, and, you know, $40, you know, doesn't, you know, in terms of a fully burdened labor rate, doesn't go particularly far. So I think that's really, really the question for the City Council. And, you know, certainly, it's a policy decision of the body.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. There is a poultry amendment coming in front of council at our next meeting, and the same conversation was brought up months ago. low income to have assistance or have that fee paid. There's also conversation about how frequently the fee is assessed. Simply lowering the fee without other evidence that it, that really is going to either encourage or discourage people from keeping poultry for the purpose of eggs, I, I don't feel that it's, it's been supported or proved to my satisfaction. Thank you.
I think Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. So, you know, I think we've heard over the years numerous times that, you know, that, that cost is a burden for people, and we've only had a handful of people request these licenses. And, and so, I think we have to hear that. I think the other thing is that, you know, we, we license a lot of different things in this city, and, you know, I just think about, you know, our different, all the different kinds of things that are licensed, from bars to restaurants to, you know, to different work sites and all those kinds of things. You know, I guess my, my hope is that we say that we would like to see more poultry keeping for the different cultural, environmental, and equity reasons that we originally passed this ordinance and that we'd be willing to understand that there's a very nominal impact to the budget, but it's a priority that, that we're looking for. And so, you know, hopefully, there's that, that cases there. I do think that cost, you know, is a burden, and, and, you know, we've looked at other communities around the state, don't charge anything close to the level that we are. The, the first year that you potentially would keep chickens, I think you end up paying a hundred and eighty-five dollars for that first year, and each year after it's, I believe it's ninety dollars. You know, that's not anywhere in keeping with other communities. And so, you know, I'm, I'm feeling like if, if, if the Health Board is going to continue kind of having that higher rate, then my hope is that we would consider offsetting it with a lower amount.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Any other discussion in regards to the amendment? Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Appreciate the conversation, and I think that I'll be supporting this tonight due to the fact that there's really a handful of people who will be affected by this, and probably it's going to take more time to discuss it than the actual expense that either the city will have or maybe even the saving, saving people will realize. I do think, though, that this is a reminder for our body to be really intentional about what is the goal that we have here with setting some of these license and fee structures, understanding that we do have comparables to other communities, even our own internal comparables. We received an email today from a constituent comparing just the price of licensing a different, something different in the city as far as what people can have at their home, and there's a cost differentiation there that's quite lower than the keeping of poultry. So, I think it's more of a philosophical question that is probably not appropriate for right now, and due to the fact that really it's a very small amount, I think that is just fine. If we can help make five people's year better, well, that's, that's a good thing. And just for us to really maybe think about having some intentionality around our approach to the fee and license structure.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other discussion? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Councilmember Worthman, and Councilmember Jean for bringing this forward. I, you know, it's been a long conversation here. I know at one point I, I did not support reducing the fee, but now that we've had some time to, you know, to see how, how much people end up utilizing the opportunity to keep poultry in the city, you know, it hasn't, it hasn't met my expectations, I guess, in terms of the number of applicants and, so I do think there is a barrier here if you put everything together and it's really, from a sustainability and, you know, standpoint of what we're trying to, to encourage, you know, I, I think I'll be, yeah, I mean, I plan to support this just because, you know, I think we should be flexible about how we implement new things, and this is, this is just another variable that we can tweak in order to, to help people really and, and help our community be more sustainable and, and make sure everybody has access to be a part of that. You know, this is obviously somewhat, you know, this was not an amendment that was in the packet, but I, I think, you know, I think there has been a long enough conversation, and we've heard requests from people in the community consistently that this is an issue that they'd like to see addressed by the city council, and so I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Klinkhammer, did you have? I see your microphone is off.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. Based on what the conversation is regarding this, it would seem to me that rather than doing this during the budget process, even though the impact is negligible, maybe it would be more appropriate to be more holistic about this and look at poultry and bees and any of the other fees regarding growing food and whatnot should be done all at one time and taking these factors into account. So, I, I think I'd rather do that. So, in that context, I don't think I'll support this particular one because I think pollinators and bees are more important or at least as important as poultry, and I think that we should do them all at one time because it really isn't a budget issue, it's a priority issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Klinkhammer. Any other discussion? I guess I would like to add, I, you know, I certainly understand and support the idea of reducing fees where, you know, we've had the time to, to, to study and discuss and, and make decisions, you know, as a body, as a community. And in this case, I, I think we're, you know, we're, we're reacting without the discussion that, that we've been hoping to have, and, and I think ideally, I think we're all in support of it. And, you know, part of the reason that, that there was amendment brought forward earlier in the year was, was, you know, hopefully having conversation to create opportunities for some of these costs to be supplemented or, or even, you know, gifted to the individuals that, that wanted to, to participate. And then also the, the idea around education and, and helping with the, the creation and construction and, and, you know, process of putting together a, a poultry system in, in, in individuals' homes. And, and so, I, I, I agree. I'd rather see us take the time to, to, to look at all of our different fees that, that regard, you know, pets and, and farming and poultry and bees and, and so on, and, and really make some, you know, have some good discussions and make some smart decisions. And right now, we're, you know, just to randomly throw a number out, I don't think is responsible on our part, but, and I understand, too, we're talking about a very few amount, very few, very low amount of people, number of people that, that have applied to this, and certainly, we don't want to discourage it by the cost, but I think it's important that we take our time and let's, let's, let's get through the process and do what we can. And in the end, if it ends up being there, then great. If, if not, then I think we need to be responsible in that regard, so. Councilmember Lor.
I, I am not supporting this motion, too, because I, I think that we, instead of just, you know, pick up the number and put it in there, I think that we probably, as a body, we need to look at all of the licenses before we make any further motion to bow out. And so, on this motion, I will not be supporting tonight, so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lor. Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you so much. I'm wondering if somebody from staff could describe what the process would look like to have more of that holistic conversation and process and potential timing. I apologize, it was definitely spur-of-the-moment question, but I wasn't aware of this amendment, didn't, haven't really had a lot of time to think about it, except just today. I do think that's important, so I'm wondering if there's any perspective that staff might want to share about process and, and kind of a timeframe.
Mr. Solberg.
I think if there is further discussion to be had regarding the, the fees, you know, both for this and for beekeeping and to have time for public outreach, having virtual meetings, it, it wouldn't be in line with this, the vote today for our, our budget documents, but it would be something that could be brought forward. The fee and license table, it is possible to amend it with a, with a process, a, a city council process next year, early in the year. I'm not sure how, how the outreach would go and how, how timely it would be with the, you know, with, with the activity going into the holiday season, but there, there is a definite process that could be gone through to get outreach and then address it prior to next budget season. The other option would be to have the outreach between now and next, next summer and then incorporate any changes in the early stages of the budget season as we head into the 2022 budget.
Mr. Winsenz.
Thank you, Council President Weld, and maybe just to elaborate a little bit more on what Mr. Solberg described. I think, in my mind, it would be very helpful from, from staff's perspective to, to have a clear understanding and maybe even the form of a council policy on what our cost recovery goals are, if any, in setting our fees, fees and licenses rather than, you know, on a one-off basis, you know, reducing, reducing or increasing those fees. And, and, you know, there may be, there may be some kind of, if you will, sub-goals in there. You know, maybe we have, you know, some communities have a, you know, a cost recovery goal for adult recreation programming, but a different cost recovery goal for youth. There might be opportunities for one type of cost recovery goal for persons experiencing lower incomes. So, I mean, I think that kind of policy-level discussion would be, for me, would be helpful before staff actually jumps in and starts, and starts making, making fee proposals. The other discussion that we, we had a year or two ago, you know, had to do with, with building permit fees. So, I think that, you know, if we have that philosophical discussion, have that policy discussion, and, and have an understanding of what direction council would like to go, staff could then put together some, some, some proposals, and, you know, in more likelihood, there is going to be some financial impact associated with, with that, but that would give, I feel that would give us some guidance in the direction that council would like to see this go.
Thank you, Mr. Winsenz. Any other discussion or questions from council in regards to the amendment? Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you. If you all could see me, I'm got my, rubbing my forehead, this is such a toughie. You know, I really see the merits on both sides, and I feel really conflicted, even though I said, you know, I think I can support this. I guess another question for staff, in the event that, let's say, this proposal fails, what's a request for somebody if they are maybe are experiencing financial barriers? What is the request? You know, we do offer other reduced fares and reduced programming fees across the city. Does that apply in any way, or can staff administratively meet somebody in the middle if they are experiencing a barrier? And maybe that would be a good solution, if that could be taken care of administratively while council looks toward a more holistic conversation.
I'm not sure. Mr. Winsenz, or Mr. Solberg, or Mr. Nick?
This is, this is Jay. I, I will certainly defer to Mr. Nick as well, but in, to the best of my knowledge, we, we don't have any ability to, to do that, to, to adjust these fares, or the fares, adjust these fees administratively on a case-by-case basis without some sort of authorizing resolution from the city council allowing, allowing us to do that. So, you know, these fees are established by the city council, and to the best of my knowledge, we have no ability to do that, but Mr. Nick may, may have some additional information.
Mr. Nick?
In this one instance, I do not. No, Jay's, Jay's correct. You know, the fees are, are set by city council, and unless there's exceptions made to those fees, they're applied uniformly.
Any other discussion from council in regards to the amendment? Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I will be supporting this amendment. I, I feel like, I feel like this is an easy decision. It's such a minimal budget impact, and it could have a real impact on people's lives and, and their ability to feed their family. And even, you know, even if that, if that's a small number now, I think that that's with such a small budget impact, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't do that. So, I think, I think that this is less complicated than, than it might seem, and, and so, I hope that I'll definitely be enthusiastically, enthusiastically supporting this and hope that my council colleagues will as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Any other discussion? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and, you know, I think part of what, part of the, some of the information I'm going off of is what other cities do in terms of, you know, how they have chosen much lower fees than us for this particular activity, and in some ways, that, that's part of what's guiding me here, and maybe, you know, I would certainly, as was discussed earlier, you know, about a broader conversation, you know, I, I would welcome that at some point in the future, but I don't think that would have to happen before I, you know, vote to support something like this because fees can go up and down over time. But, you know, it does kind of make me wonder about, you know, what, what, you know, if you look at pet licenses, for example, for dogs and cats, you know, one of the things is sometimes a fee will, will be a barrier to someone even, you know, getting a license in the first place. I don't think that, that's an issue here necessarily, but like, I really have no idea how many people who have dogs and cats in this city actually have the license. That's a, it's a different topic, but I would be interested. a license in the first place. And I don't think that, that's an issue here necessarily. But like, I really have no idea how many people who have dogs and cats in this city actually have a license. That's a, it's a different topic, but I would be interested in kind of diving into, into the subject of fees and, in general, in the future. But I, I just think this is, as Councilmember Beaton said, a pretty, pretty straightforward proposal, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilmember Greger. Councilmember Beaton, did you have another comment?
No, I apologize. It just snapped. Take it out of my hand.
No worries. Thanks. Any other discussion from council? I'm seeing none. City Attorney Nick, please call the roll for the amendment.
Correct. And the amendment, Weld is actually up first?
No.
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson? That was partially cut off. Is that, was it an aye, Councilmember Anderson?
It was an aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Beaton?
Uh, no.
Is it no? Emmanuel?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Uh, no.
Lor?
No.
So that amendment passes seven to four. Back to the original resolution. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I have a similar amendment, and it's regarding the fee for beekeeping, the license fee. And Councilmember Beaton is the second on this.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Beaton. Did you wish to share additional thoughts, Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. This is another topic that we have heard, you know, we don't get a lot of people speaking during our fee and license period each year, but this is one that we hear almost every year consistently and usually from numerous people. And that is, again, that, you know, we have people in our community that really would like to do beekeeping. And I think our, we have a low number. Again, it's probably a, a handful of people that actually keep bees in our community. And we have heard that, that the fee is actually prohibitive. And I think one of the things I'd like to point out is that my hope is that if we are able to lower this, you know, again, it's only our city portion of the fee, but my hope is that it brings the overall cost down $30 from $80 a year to $50 a year, that that could have some impact on a year-to-year basis in, in the short run. I think in the long run, I agree with council that it, we, we, I think we, we should have a conversation around fees, and I think we should have a conversation about what are the priorities and how do we think about, you know, is, obviously, cost recovery has to be a part of the discussion, but there could be a way of looking at fees where schools in our community, where even certain environmental goals are in our community, and therefore, you know, we think differently about how we're going to structure fees. And that, you know, that's one thing that I think broader, a broader conversation would be welcome, but at least in the short run, my hope is that this fee can, fee reduction would help, help us actually achieve the policy goal that we set out with when we passed this ordinance. And so I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Councilmember Beaton, did you wish to share any thoughts and second?
Yeah, I, I'll just keep it really short. I, I see this, this is very similar to, to the previous amendment. I think it's a, a matter of, of equity. It's a matter of access to, to food and, in some cases, you know, like medicine, medicinal foods. And, and I think, and, and also environmentalism in the case of honeybees. And so I think this, you know, with, with the small budgetary impact, I think that this decision is easy. And again, hope that our council colleagues will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President. On this particular amendment, I, I think that the fee probably should be lower, but I was much more moved by the speaker last night at the public hearing about the timeliness, when is the fee charged, and the whole idea of how do you best support the keeping of bees? So I'm all about that. I don't think this is a process that is really meaningful in, in supporting bee, beekeeping. All it does is takes away part of the, the income from the fee. I'd much, I would much prefer a conversation that, that brought about a process that actually does support beekeeping and not just reducing a fee. But I appreciate this being brought forward.
Any other discussion? I also, again, would just like to see more conversation about all of this. And I think it's healthy for us as a, as a body and as a community. And I think we need to offer the oppor- the, the community the opportunity to, to share in their thoughts. And this is a lot to be learned. And I think in the end, I, I think we're all going to agree on the same thing, that we want it to be affordable and sustainable and, and equitable. And, and I think in this case, we, we can do that, but we need to have discussion and conversation. And I think right now, that's the most important thing, so that we can address not just these concerns, but others too. So. Councilmember Clinkhammer.
Council President, I am on the same perspective as I was with poultry keeping, but I like bees. I'm not as infatuated with chickens, so I'll support this, even though it's imperative, I think, that we take a deeper look at this kind of fee structure. And I agree with Councilmember Christopherson. It's, one of the factors is the amount of the cost, but it's another about the timing, because I know many beekeepers can't make or won't make a decision about keeping bees until they've wintered. And quite often, they will lose all their hives and faced with a significant fee structure, it is very daunting. But we need to take a better look at this. But I will support the bees.
Thank you, Councilmember Clinkhammer. Any other discussion? Councilmember Clinkhammer, did you have another comment, or? All right. Seeing no other discussion, City Attorney, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Beaton?
No.
Aye. Lor?
No.
Weld?
No.
Beaton? One last time, Beaton?
Um, just, sorry, um, excuse me. This is Councilmember Beaton. I'm sorry, my, my internet connection isn't good tonight. I'd like to record my vote as aye.
Note at eight-three.
Eight to three, and that amendment passes. Is there any other discussion or amendments in regards to Agenda Item Number 22, in regards to Schedule of Fees and Licenses? Seeing none. Again, the resolution amending the City of Eau Claire Schedule of Fees and Licenses with the three amendments is brought forward. And City Attorney, please call the roll.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burgy? Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregory?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 23 is an ordinance amending Chapter 15.04 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Sewage Service Charge to Increase the Sewer User's Charges As Proposed in the 2021 Operating Budget. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Winsanz from last night's presentation? Seeing none. On a motion then by Councilmember Clinkhammer and seconded by Councilmember Law, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. City Attorney, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregory?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman? Jean?
Aye.
Eleven-zero.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 24 is an ordinance amending the City of Eau Claire Pay Plan and Practices. Does council have any questions for Ms. Selton from last night's presentation? Seeing none. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Jean, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. City Attorney, please call the roll.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burgy? Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel? Gregory?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean? Anderson?
Aye.
Eleven-zero.
And that item passes unanimously. Again, just a shout out and a, and a huge thank you, and it's been echoed many times tonight, but to, to our city directors and our finance department, Mr. Winsanz and all of their staff, our city manager and interim city manager and the community. You know, we, we continue to, to meet the needs with limited, with limited income. And, you know, it's, 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 it's amazing that we, we continue to do it, and it's due to a lot of hard work. Obviously, there's still needs that we can't meet, but, but we continue to strive to do the best that we can. And I'm appreciative, and I know that this council and this community is as well. So, thank you to all of you. And congratulations on a, on a, another budget and, and, and a lot of hard work. So, with that, I will turn it over to interim city manager Solberg for any announcements.
Just a few announcements this evening. On Friday, November 20th, a week from this coming Friday, there are two events from 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. There's a virtual Eggs and Issues. It'll be an election analysis with the Marquette Polls, Charles Franklin. If you're interested in attending that, please let Ms. Merle know in the city manager's office. And then also at, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., there is a Second Annual Neighborhood Summit scheduled for, again, a week from this coming Friday. And there will be an opportunity for neighborhood associations to meet virtually, similar to how they met last year. Councilmembers Christopherson and Councilmembers Burgy are, are instrumental in organizing this. And for, for, for their information, I can see either one of those two or talk to them. And then I'd just like to give an extra thanks again to Kerry Repel, the city clerk, and Nick Kerner for pulling off a safe and efficient election. They did it with the help of numerous city departments and staff, from the police department to every department that we have, and including some help from the library for poll workers and drive-through voting. And to get the voter turnout and gather the number of elections that you would typically see in a presidential year, to, to accomplish that in the face of the pandemic is truly a, an amazing effort. And I'd like to thank them. And then also with the pandemic, I mean, we're, we're entering in, you know, our ninth month of the, of the COVID pandemic. And we'd just like to thank Health Director Giese and the Health Department, along with all the members of the community that we have, from the health system to hospitals, to city staff, to legal. I mean, everybody is together in the effort to, to fight this. And it's still going to be a long fight, but I just wanted to express appreciation for the work that's been done. I'm so far in the work that's ongoing with this pandemic, and we'll get through it. So, with that, that's all the announcements that I had today.
Any other announcements from council? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. I'd, I'd like to go back to Mr. Solberg's announcement for the Neighborhood Summit. If council members would like to be assigned to particular breakouts because they're interested in that, I want to make sure that there's at least one council member in each breakout group to take some notes about questions and information that can be shared more, more wild, widely. So if you are interested, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Any other announcements from council? I'm not seeing any. If there is no objection from council, seeing or hearing none, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRF LP 101.1.